Merry Christmas, everyone. This is as close as we get in 2016. I'll call the meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for the singing of our National Anthem. Singing of our National Anthem? That's Nicole. All right. Well, that was a robust rendition. All right. Item 1.0 is additions to the agenda. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Schuler. All in favor? That's carried. Item 3.0, corrections or amendments to the November 23rd, 2016 regular meeting of council minutes, or the November 30th special meeting of council minutes? Any corrections or amendments, Counselor Bossert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the minutes for the special meeting of council at 4.1, the resolution itself words that we are approving administration to enter into a contract, and I'm not sure that administration enters into contracts, does that town of Drayton Valley enters into contracts? Yes, no?
We, no, I think it's worded correctly that what was authorized was to have administration negotiate the terms within certain financial parameters.
Okay, then all that needs to be changed is the word "move" to the word "moved."
Which I'll take as a typographical matter. Is that it? Anyone else? All right. Take a motion to adopt the November 23rd, 2016 regular meeting of council minutes and the November 30th, 2016 special meeting of council minutes. Counselor Fredrickson down there. Down there. All in favor? That's carried. 5.0 is our delegations. We have one, Staff Sergeant Kelleghou. Good morning.
Good morning. You'll have to, excuse me, I've got a little under the weather, so.
Everybody's had that.
It's that time of year, I guess. So just to get started here, I'm just going to go through the package that you received this month. It's a little bit smaller than usual, that's because that's what my analysts supplied this month, so that's what you're going to have. It's only four pages, it's only seven, but I'll fill in the important parts where I can afterwards, so. Just going over our 2012-2016 comparisons again. The year, our assaults are down. We said it's 77% for the year, last year 104%, for the year 439%, so again, it's an encouraging statistic. Criminal harassment as well is down, 13 incidents from 23 last year, 100 threats is down to 25 from 43 last year. Unfortunately, on the flip side, when we get to property crime, break-in errors up from 86 to 69, I'll touch on that with the stats coming up. Theft of motor vehicles remain the same, 64 to 63 last year. Theft under again, the same, 47 for this year last. Thing went down in the property, the mischief went down from 6 to 167 this last year. I can talk a little bit about our drug enforcement, possession, trafficking charges, both are down this year. I can kind of say in our regard, in speaking with my general investigation people, that not to say that the market is destroyed per se, but the fact is that there is a little less of that movement down right now than usual, just because the money flow in the town isn't that as high as it usually is, so again, that high market is horrible, so again, that's kind of why the numbers are down in that area. Moving on to our false alarms, we were at 299 last year, we're down to 442 this year, I'll touch on that in our monthly comparisons. Moving on to page three with the assaults, we were at eight last year, this time we're at nine. Looking further into those assault charges, those nine incidents, five charges were believed, three of them were family violence incidents, one of them was himself with a weapon, and one was in combat assault against a person. Three of those are cleared otherwise, based on the claims, the charges, the state's cooperation with the police, and one of those were investigation found later, and some are unchanged. Moving on to our break-in enter, this month, we had five incidents of break-in enter. Looking into those, two of those incidences unfortunately came at the same business, one of our local liquor stores. There was an incident that happened on the 15th and 30th, so those were being handled by the state police. There was one residential break-in where two pelicans were taken, and there was one private break-in, and there's still one that's under investigation at this point, so I can't really give you the details on that, but the fact is that that covers off the break-in enter for this month. With regards to your theft under, that's theft under $5,000. Last year, at this time, we had 28 for the month, this year we have 12 of those incidents. Three of those incidents were license plates stolen off of vehicles. One of those was recovering Devon, the two others that are outstanding. One of those incidents was theft of makeup by a male subject, so kind of guessing Christmas, I'm not sure, but I don't have any great, I'm not even sure what the motivation is there. Three of those vehicles are gone through, one of them, as Lee Jackson said, there's four that are still under investigation. With regards to the mischief property, six are related to someone just checking the vehicles. Again, this is just the fact that in this particular instance, we have touched on this a number of times, compared to people making sure their vehicles are secured. There are people out there that are checking, we do get all things, we check them out. Unfortunately, though, it's kind of a hidden thing, kind of a needle in the haystack, if you get there, they're moved on somewhere else, and usually when they know that we're on the way, they tend to disappear, so. Two of those were subjects that were banging on doors, one of them came out to be just an intoxicated person who was giving a logic for the night, and another one they left before we got there. And there's three others where they're unknown causes, basically, people had heard noises and called us, and came and checked, and made sure that they were handling it. So this past month, we did get three impaired charges. One of those, the one that I got a person at, actually, just to kind of briefly touch on that, this person was actually the highest I've ever gotten in my career, four times the deal, so severely intoxicated. We also had a 420 fire suspensions, and a police save that in total for the month of November, we had 72 violation tickets ever written, 45 of those were in town. So that was a real push-on to get members out and checking vehicles, and that was a result. With that, also two check stops were detected, and one first of all. One thing I did want to touch on real briefly was that we tended to have an uptick in this score in for our false alarms. Last year, at this time, we had 18, we had 29 this past month. Looking into that a little bit, excuse me, looking into that a little bit further, 17 of those incidents were actually, were called off, were attended, so in reality, we only actually attended seven of those calls, so 29 of them. And again, a couple were related to businesses, the janitors being in the residence, or indeed a business, excuse me. One was a delivery person, there was a temperature sensor issue, for another one, and there's one actually was a personal alarm, a medical alarm, which they just didn't realize they could set off, so. In total, a lot of these, a lot of these ones are getting, are getting, I think, a message through to the people calling us off, calling us off for attending, which is, which is good to see. Just a couple other things. General news for the detachments. We have our Corporal Keith Grant, he's moving on at the end of this month, so he sold his residence and is moving on to Red Deer, so we wish him well with that, and we also have a Corporal, just confirming that is public knowledge, he has, their hire us before, I actually don't know where he is, but the fact is, is that we have someone named, not commission officer, in charge for a GIs section. Another thing that is of interest is that our detachment is now on e-collision. E-collision is a provincial system where instead of using the paper forms for filling out collision forms, now we do everything electronically. So now it will be all submitted right into a database for the over government, over transportation, and now the public can access these via the internet to obtain a copy of the report as well. So kind of moving onwards and upwards with our technology, and I think we were one of the last detachments in the area to get on the system, but it's good to hear from you. So with that, we won't put any questions.
Thank you for your report, Staff Sergeant. I have two observations that I wanted to pass on. One, I received a comment from a member of the Healthy Communities Coalition that they enjoy very much, the members of the Coalition and related agencies enjoy very much working with the new community school resource officer, and they find that that position is working well, and as you know, I and other members of council had concern at the outset of that program, that the CSRO would have the appropriate amount of time to make referrals and to interact positively with human service agencies in the community. That seems to be happening, so it's a credit to him, and it's a credit to the program.
That's one of the reasons that I actually haven't started attending, is because again, for him to be able to reach out with his manly that he has with you, if there's appropriate agencies that he can get all of his whole idea.
Right.
Trying to make that a regular.
The other observation is somewhat related, because I view the CSRO position under the broad umbrella of resiliency building initiatives in the community, and of course the work of the Healthy Communities Coalition is part of that as well. The, looking at your statistics for drug enforcement, possession, and trafficking being down, you've noted that demand seems to be tempered somewhat at present, perhaps because cash flow isn't what it was in the community. So it strikes me that this is the best time to invest in that kind of resiliency building initiative, so that when the economy rebounds and cash flow is rather greater, people will be more insulated and better prepared to withstand difficult circumstances.
And I guess, I just want to clarify with that, that it doesn't mean that drugs are stopped.
Right.
We still have a number of targets that we're looking at, and just in gathering evidence as we move on. So again, it's just, we are working steadily at that chipping away, and eventually we'll have a great amount of information to move on, with the subjects accordingly. It just comes down to that, yeah, just because the numbers are down doesn't exactly mean that you're not there still, it's just a matter of some of them don't get the supply they used to get, either they don't have their money, or whatever, so.
Right.
Anyway, that's good to hear.
Still work to be done. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. Good morning. I'm just wondering, in terms of like motor vehicle collisions, looking at ones that more incidents that are happening in town, not necessarily vehicle on vehicle, whether it's running into things, or people, or vehicles, or any type of incidents, are you guys able to break that down statistically for us? I know people are asking in terms of typically photo radar, if it's made a difference, and I'd like to know too.
Well, in the radar, photo radar, it's a type of statistic that actually is a meaningful statistic in the old days of life, because the base of basing this is not sufficient. Really, if you have an indicator on a large level, I'd have to say that'll suck eventually. Level would be more meaningful. In town itself, with regards to the, you're talking about property damage versus injury?
Both, either.
Well, just let me take a look here real quick. You know, on our, on our stats here, if you go to the yearly stats on page two, you can see here that for the year, this year we had zero fails, 12 injury related to motor vehicle collisions, and then there are other, that were property damage, and then there's 25 that were non-reportable, which means under $2,000 damage. So if you're looking at the breakdown of the cause, you probably see people look at that, but if you're looking at it within like a year or like that.
Yeah, I'm just general.
I'm just inquiring again about the tent structure near the recycle depot. I apologize if something has been done, and I haven't noticed, because I've only been around during nighttime, and with the cold weather, I notice there's no light on. However, a couple weeks ago, I did notice there was Christmas ornaments and a gate leading into the trees, so I was just doing a follow-up inquiry.
No problem. I can tell you, we have looked into it, my operations, Sergeant Matthews, I passed through with getting some details as to what exactly, where the property is, and that's kind of the issue that when I came to, when I come into council today, I knew that this would likely come up. My question was, is whose property is it?
Yeah.
Right? My understanding is, at this point, again, this is my understanding, is that it's a business that's just close by, that owns that property. We've spoken with that business owner, and they have said that they are not, that they're okay with them staying there, but the fact is that they have the place clean, which apparently they've done. That makes our job a little bit more difficult, in fact, if they're on that property, you know, any owner themselves says yes, that it's okay. Then from there, that's one of those things, again, I do have the concerns about whether or not, my understanding is they don't stay there at night.
Why? I did notice in the warmer weathers that there was usually a light on at night, but the last couple weeks where it was minus 20 and cold, or I haven't noticed any light on when I've gone that way to my house.
And it's been my understanding too, that there's been some of these where it's been propane heater for a year, and things like that as well. We have spoken with them as well, just to kind of get an understanding of what really they have in terms of the need for this year, because obviously, we didn't want to promote tent cities, bringing up of course, but again, I know that Sergeant Matthews has also been taking contact with our locals, so we're trying to work towards solving issues, so it's ongoing.
Just in that regard, I'll go back to you. It's important that if people are at least advised of the schedule for the MAP program, that might be of assistance to them, and maybe that's, maybe they're well aware of it at this point, but it's hard to know.
I can speak specifically to that. Again, I've kind of left this with my sergeant, but the report that I've been giving up to now, that's where we're at, so we're still trying to sort out whether or not this is going to be something that we can deal with, but I guess the thing that maybe for the council may look at is whether or not this is something that the town wants to have in their community, and if they're going to, perhaps, buy a lot of these, you know, to come back to it.
Yeah. Counselor Fredrickson?
Just one other question there. During the course of the investigation, has fire been involved? I'm just wondering, I don't know if, you know, there's fireplaces, you had said there's a propane heater, I mean, we don't really know exactly what is going on inside the structure.
You're right, I don't know whether or not Sergeant Swoosh has to, or if it's not involved.
All right. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. And with respect to Corporal Grant, please extend our appreciation for his service in the community, and wish him and his family well in Red Deer.
He's actually leaving us, I think, just before Christmas, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to the decision items in 6.0. 6.1, Counselor Long, the 2017 interim fee schedule.
Thank you. In conjunction with the 2017 budget considerations, administration from each town facility and department has reviewed its respective fees for the coming year. 2017 interim fee schedule reflects minimal adjustments to recreation and development fees to maintain affordability. Further, the interim fee schedule includes those fees which are applicable through the Clean Energy Technology Center for the variety of services offered through that facility. Administration presents the attached 2017 interim fee schedule for council's consideration and adoption, with the intention that the same shall be implemented January 1st, 2017. Therefore, I move that council approve the 2017 fee schedule as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Long. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. I just have a question on 1.7. It's under animal control, and it's the adoption fees, and I just need a refresher on what we have adoption fees for.
Can the administration speak to that? Who wants to take a shot at it? Mr. Dibbin?
I will take that under advisement.
Your Honor, and I will get the counselor an answer before the meeting is adjourned.
Who says I can't read people, eh? All right. Counselor Wheeler again.
Sorry, the other question is in terms of faxing. There is the facsimile fee between the Omniplex and Town Office, I believe, is quite a discrepancy. I would prefer to fax from the Omniplex, if anyone's wondering.
Administration, have any comment on that?
It's just a comment. Other than that?
Okay. It's an observation. Oh, Kevin, did you have a?
Yes, the Omniplex revised all their facsimile fees over the year. That was an oversight, I'll correct it for.
Thank you. Anything further on item 6.1? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Item 6.2, Counselor Schuler, the 2017 interim budget.
Thank you, worship. Throughout the 2017 budget consideration process, administration and council have undertaken consultation with the public and explored the options which may be considered in respect to achieving a balance between financial resources and management of expenses. The attached 2017 interim budget reflects the town's consideration, the current economic climate, and impacts on the broader community, with a view to maintaining longer-term sustainability and a quality of life that is vital to the well-being of all residents and businesses who call Drayton Valley their home. As such, administration has prepared and submits for council approval the 2017 interim operating and capital budgets for the town of Drayton Valley. I therefore move that council approve the 2017 interim operating and capital budget as presented for the town of Drayton Valley with operating revenues of $15,174,958, taxes, net of school and senior requisitions of $11,589,540, for total revenues of $26,764,498. Operating expenditures of $24,243,939, debt repayment of $1,038,994, transfers to reserves of $1,481,564, for total expenditures of $26,764,498. Capital expenditures and financing, $14,874,161.
Thank you, Counselor Schuler. Mr. Dibbin? He's moved already.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council. In keeping with the mayor's comment about having some fun today, I thought I'd try a different vantage point for this particular piece. To start off, I would like to just provide a little bit of context and background to council and for those others present, in terms of what has led to the context of the budget, the recommendations that administration has for council's consideration this morning, and following some brief remarks, I'll ask Mr. McMillan to come up and then present the details of the financial numbers. In terms of overall approach, the work that has been undertaken by administration has been one to try and find that right balance. The balance between fiscal stability, as well as an eye to longer-term community sustainability. And in terms of that, the backdrop, of course, that council or anyone else in the community is more fully aware of, is the backdrop of not just in town, in the community, but also in the province, of sharply declining local revenues, provincial revenues, and aspects, and really economic conditions that are testing and challenging long-held budgetary approaches, budgetary assumptions, and aspects going forward. When looking at our current year, 2016, and the context that that has given us toward looking to 2017, the 0% general tax approach that council adopted last year, which fully appropriate, given the circumstances and aspects of the time, in administration's perspective is quite simply not available to council for consideration going forward, and from administration's perspective, also not advisable as well. We take a look in terms of then what that balanced approach means going forward, and that really talks about, in terms of finding the balance, it's really three different levers and heads. One, and this work has been undertaken in 2016, given the backdrop of revenue projections that's quite simply haven't materialized, but it's toward expenditure reduction. Looking at where to from here, particularly on our capital approach and the capital plan, is that increased partnerships, leverage, grant support, and other partnerships to look at how we enact needed and necessary and desired projects for the capital plan is not just becoming desirable, but it's going to be critical for the horizon of not just our five-year capital plan that we put forward, but the longer-term capital plan as well. And then the third element, of course, is our revenue picture, and looking at what our revenue opportunities are, what those elements are going to have to be, but keeping in mind too as well the economic backdrop and the local circumstances and situations that our residents and our business and industry are facing as well. Looking a little bit deeper and further into these different areas, two elements of cost reductions, and this goes back to the direction that council gave in budget 2016, of looking at all our services, looking at all of our public dollar expenditures, and ensuring a couple of things, is every dollar being spent wisely, and are we maximizing the efficiencies that we can garner from those public expenditures? Two elements and two aspects. One is, can we do the same service? Can we provide necessary services to property and citizenry and other desired services within the budget parameters that we've had previously? And then after exploring and looking at those options, taking it one step further than in terms of with the available resources that we do have, what are the services that need to be provided? What services can be provided, and at what frequency and level will those services be provided going forward in 2017? As I mentioned, when looking at the capital plan, the 2017- that's quite simply haven't materialized, but it's toward expenditure reduction. Looking at where to from here, particularly on our capital approach and the capital plan, is that increased partnerships, leverage, grant support, and other partnerships to look at how we enact needed and necessary and desired projects for the capital plan is not just becoming desirable, but it's going to be critical for the horizon of not just our five-year capital plan that we put forward, but the longer-term capital plan as well. And then the third element, of course, is our revenue picture, and looking at what our revenue opportunities are, what those elements are going to have to be, but keeping in mind too as well the economic backdrop and the local circumstances and situations that our residents and our business and industry are facing as well. Looking a little bit deeper and further into these different areas, two elements of cost reductions. And this goes back to the direction that council gave in budget 2016 of looking at all our services, looking at all of our public dollar expenditures, and ensuring a couple of things. Is every dollar being spent wisely? And are we maximizing the efficiencies that we can garner from those public expenditures? Two elements and two aspects. One is, can we do the same service? Can we provide necessary services to property and citizenry and other desired services within the budget parameters that we've had previously? And then, after exploring and looking at those options, taking it one step further than in terms of, with the available resources that we do have, what are the services that need to be provided? What services can be provided? And at what frequency and level will those services be provided going forward in 2017? As I mentioned, when looking at the capital plan, the 2017 interim budget presentation has a singular focus initially, and that is the maintenance and preservation of our existing capital assets. First and foremost, simply put, we need to take care of what we have. When we have robust maintenance and replacement plans, and when we have a solid handle on what those needs are to ensure the provision of service, but also in terms of maintaining and maximizing the useful lifespan of those assets, then we know we've got that part of the equation right. When those expenditures to maintain those assets then are known, then we understand the financial context of which then other capital planning activities and projects and desired positionings for future growth can be considered. The 2017 proposal for the capital budget for council is significantly more modest than what councils have seen in the past, and it is focused on an approach that endeavors to maximize our leverage and our partnership opportunities, both with our neighbors, but also in terms of positioning these with other granting sources, programs, and agencies as well. The last aspect that I want to touch on briefly as well, then speaks to the revenue aspect. Certainly, in looking at what our revenue needs are for maintaining this balanced program and approach, there was a desire to try and minimize what the recommendation would be to council for a general tax increase for our ratepayers in Drayton Valley. Keeping in mind expenditure reduction, modest capital plan, and then also the recommended budget increase, administration is recommending for council's consideration a 3.99% general tax increase for the town of Drayton Valley. What this means would be, in terms of our residential and our non-residential ratepayers, the average residential ratepayer, as a result of this, would see an increase of $65.31 per year, translates to $5.44 per month. Our average non-residential ratepayer would see an increase of $464.88 per year, which translates to $38.74 per month as well for a commercial or industrial property owner on average. With those general overview comments and aspects along those lines, I would ask Mr. McMillan to come forward and walk council through some of the more detailed elements of the plan. And then, following that, if there are any questions or greater detail that council would like to see from myself, Mr. McMillan, or any of the department heads, we will endeavor to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dibbin. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you very much, Mayor, council. Yes, as outlined in the resolution, we're looking at running revenue, for operating budget, looking at running revenues of $26.76 million for 2017. This is pretty much in line with what we ran in 2016. Expense side, we're looking at $24.24 million. This is a decrease of about 3.8% or just under $1 million from 2016. This is achieved through reductions to contract services as well as a more defined program for repairs and maintenance largely. Overall, we have a net surplus of $2.52 million. This is before debt repayment or capital expenditures. Next slide. All right. As for assumptions for growth, we're looking at new developments at a 0% for both 2017 and 2018. We felt this was a conservative approach and would ensure that there are no hiccups come next year budget cycle. Debt repayment, we're expecting $1,038,944 for, $994 for 2017. And as for our automatic traffic enforcement reserve, we have $120,580 as of the end of 2015. Given budgeted expenditures and revenues are about on pace, we expect that amount will remain there at the end of 2016, assuming all the safe and healthy community allocations are made as per budget. Next slide. Capital budget, we have forecasted $14,874,161 to be spent in 2017, of which $1,899,331 is reserved, is financed by the operating account and a draw on reserves. The biggest single project accounting for the majority of that $14 million is $10 million for bio-industrial park development. This, however, is grant contingent, so will not go forward unless significant grant funding is obtained. And generally, the remainder is primarily focused on maintaining and improving our core infrastructure requirements as outlined by Mr. Dibbin earlier. Finally, regarding the fee schedule, most changes were limited to cost of living, with many fees actually held at the same levels of 2016. One notable departure is hangar leases at the airport were increased to $1.10 per square meter for private and $1.50 per square meter for commercial. This is continuing the phased approach that was started in 2016 to get these up to more market comparable rates. So, we have now achieved that with this 2017 fee schedule. Finally, new rates are added for the Clean Energy Technology Center as they're now hit the ground running in our running programs. I will give it back to Mr. Dibbin. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. And so, at this point, if council has any questions, comments they would like to make, I have some remarks to deliver, but I'll wait until council has exhausted its commentary, which it doesn't appear to be jumping. Okay. Counselor Long?
Thank you. I was going to wait to let some others speak, but apparently there was no rush. I'd like to thank administration for the great deal of work that's clearly gone into this. This has been an exhausting and exhaustive process, and I think, or I hope, we've come up with the right answer. Just for the public's information, though, because this has caused some confusion in the past, this is the interim budget. We'll look at this again in April, May, before we do the final budget. I've had times in the past where people have asked me why they increase taxes twice in a year. This is a projected number that will get locked down when we pass the final budget in a few months. It gives people a sense of where we're going, and it's probably very close to the final answer, but we won't do that for a bit. Thank you.
Right to our. Thank you, Counselor Long. Of course, a big part of municipal budgeting is the education requisition that the province applies. Approximately one-third of everyone's municipal tax bill goes to the province in the form of the education requisition. It's merely collected by the municipalities. And then the other thing is the assessments, tax assessments. And they come in early in the new year, and they tell us what the expected market value of our assessment base is. So, those two factors weigh heavily in the final outcome. Anything further, Counselor Schuler?
Yeah, I just want to echo Counselor Long's "thank you" to administration. It's been a difficult 2016. Administration has, I think, really stepped up to the challenge, put out, not only by council but by the community, to reduce our expenses, and they've done that. To take $1 million out of our expenses is very admirable, and frankly, I'm not sure how you did it. So, I'm glad to see that, you know, we've echoed and stepped up to, you know, what the community was saying in that, you know, things, times are tough, and, you know, and we have to try to reduce as well. And I believe, you know, the town has done that. I think this increase is probably a little more than what a lot of people would like to see, but unfortunately, you know, it is the realities. We do have to continue to keep the town running, provide the infrastructure and the services that, you know, that people have come to rely on. And during an economic downturn, there is more demand put on those services than when times are good. So, I think administration has done a fabulous job, and I want to also thank council for going through this process, because I think this is probably one of the toughest budgets we've had to do since I've been on. I think the only one that was, that rates up there was 2007, when we lost 12% of our revenue in one stroke. So, it's been tough, and I hope the citizens of Drayton Valley can appreciate the sacrifices that administration has made and the work that council administration has put into this budget.
Thank you, Counselor Schuler. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. I think long-term planning is extremely critical for our community, for any community. And I think that, as we look at moving forward, we're going to have more and more things that need to be fixed and maintained. Our community is going to be celebrating its 60th anniversary, and if you think of a house that's 60 years old, you're going to be starting to look at replacing things, and that has a cost. And I think it's important that we are where we're at now, but we also think about the future and make sure that there's planning for the future, and that those projects are going to happen and that we have the funds available to do them. We're still, with this tax percent increase, looking at drawing on our reserves. So, I think that it's important that we do this, make this decision.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. Counselor Fredrickson?
I just want to say that I wholeheartedly agree with administration and my colleagues in understanding that the combination of a 0% increase as well as a zero growth in the economy has compounded the negative effects on our municipal revenues. However, since passing the budget in 2016, this council and administration has aggressively sought ways to bring the revenue and expenses into balance. We have reviewed and found policy efficiencies that have potential to realize operational efficiencies. We have reduced our staff complement and reduced our seasonal positions. We have sought operational reductions across the departments. We have re-tendered projects to see cost savings. And in this budget, there is a proposal of a, there is a proposal regarding wages. Furthermore, our capital budget is focused on just the necessities. These are recent, within the last six months, changes. I would like to see how these changes would actually realize in 2017. Also, as I look at the proposed budget, I thought a lot about some of the discussions around the table, and as my colleagues have said, there has been a lot of discussions, there has been a lot of concern. One frustration I aired, I believe it was last spring, when our municipal neighbors released their 2016 budget inclusive of a rebate that was the impact of those decisions that have on the region as a whole. We have continually noted the tax divide for our non-residents between town and county as an issue for both growth of our municipality and our competitiveness as a community. While county decision to subsidize with reserves and hold tax line affects the low end of that tax spectrum, if we improve a substantial increase, we too are playing a part in driving a larger wedge between the, on the non-residential side between municipalities on the high end of the spectrum. Our non-residents account for 40% of our tax revenue, and an increase of 3.99% for some is over a $2,000 jump in their tax bill, and others, it's $300, with the average, as administration has said, being $464.88. An increase, which in itself doesn't sound like much on some levels, but with business far from booming at this point and product is stagnant on the shelves, a $300 increase or even a $400 increase is substantial. So, what I want to be clear is, I'm not advocating for no taxes, but what I'm suggesting or asking is for this council to consider a 0.5 to a 1% reduction in what is being proposed today.
Thank you, Counselor Fredrickson. Were there any more comments?
If I can respond to Counselor Fredrickson's proposal, I don't necessarily disagree, but I think we can pass the interim budget as it stands, because it is an interim budget, and if we wish to revisit the final tax increase, we can do that in May.
I'm quite certain we will revisit it when the assessments and the education requisitions are made available to us, because that's our process. So, the points are well taken. I think everyone in this room and beyond takes it very seriously. There are no superfluous percentage points in a budget. Every point, every tenth of a point is there for a reason. So, with that, any final comments? Okay. I'm going to... Mr. Dibbin, did you have your hand up?
Just maybe one comment to Counselor Fredrickson's advice and recommendation. Certainly, the approach that we took in-year, in 2016, and also these elements for 2017, do not stop based on what has been presented for council's consideration today on the interim budget. One of the elements, and just the nature of revenues and aspects along those lines, that I don't think, certainly I know council's appreciation for, but the public doesn't see, is that what the situation could have been, what might have occurred had council not been directive and diligent in ensuring that we were looking at these matters all the way along. And I certainly would say to council that administration has appreciated council's diligence in looking at these and its desire and drive to understand all of the drivers when looking at what these different components are. In terms of our approach, you know, and as Mr. McMillan had said, what the reduced expenditure budgeted profile 2016 to 2017, we know and we need to keep a diligent eye on what the external factors are as well, and the adage that we've really brought as well, and it may seem a bit trite, but just because we budgeted it doesn't mean we spend it. And we will continue to bring that perspective to all of our public expenditures as we enter 2017 and continue.
Yep. Counselor Fredrickson, you have a final comment?
I just want to share that, in sharing those comments, I do sincerely appreciate the efforts that administration has done, and you guys have carried us along, basically, since we started down this road in September. That being said, the struggle that I've had is trying to find that balance between, and I think we all have had that, that balance between providing those social and necessary services and being financially prudent. And I can say, on the prudent side, we are. We have done a lot on the policy changes. We've done a lot on reining in expenses, and I do appreciate that. It's just, I'm trying to find a balance, a balance.
Counselor Schuler?
Yeah, just want to respond quickly to Counselor Fredrickson's request to council to really look at, you know, reducing the percentage increase here. I just want to caution council, as it is, even with a 3.99, we're drawing on reserves, reserves that are already below the minimum. And to continue to do that means we have to borrow. And we're not in a position to continue to borrow. So, I caution council, Counselor Wheeler was very correct in saying that we do still have to plan for the future. And if we, you know, continue, you know, we did a 0% last year. And if we continue to do those kind of increases, or minimal increases, it will bankrupt this community. There's just no other way of saying it. So, I caution council, you know, when they do look at doing the final budget in the spring, to take that into consideration, because what you do now has a long-term effect. And we've seen that with our 0% last year, and, you know, we're going to continue to see that as we move forward.
Thank you, Counselor Schuler. One last comment?
One last comment. Councilor Fredrickson?
Thank you, Councilor Schuler. And again, that's in the initial part of my comments was essentially looking at allowing those changes that we have made, some of those going to cost recovery, allowing those to take effect. I think right now, the picture is murky. We do not know the assessment values, whether there's going to be a reduction in those values or not. We haven't had the opportunity to see the realization of a lot of those policy and expense changes that we are making. And I get it, on the revenue side, looking at, I mean, that reserve piece is a looming piece. However, I mean, we're going to be subsidizing through reserves at any percentage up until, I forget what the percentage to actually break even on that would be a substantial increase. So, I mean, again, it's finding that balance. At what point, at what, at what point, or I don't know how to put this, is that Mr. Dibbin had said this in his, I think it was Mr. Dibbin or either Kevin, looking at our services, looking at, you know, there has to come a point also where we're going to be looking at tightening things up, the levels of services that we have. I would really like to look at, and I know this administration has, rather than looking at that increased revenue side, really, really continually, and I know Mr. Dibbin had said this, continually looking at our expense side and where we can find efficiencies.
Thank you. Thank you all. And in fact, I think this budget does reflect an appreciation for that level of service. While efforts are going to be made to maintain them as best we can, would not be unforeseen that the public sees a change in levels of service. That does not mean that they won't get service, it means that it may take a different form. So with that, I have a few comments, trying out something new this year, and that is an effort to encapsulate some of the key initiatives or drives that this council has undertaken in the past year with a view to the future. 2016, it's been said already, was a very challenging year. I don't think there's a month that's gone by, and I'm pretty sure everyone in this room and beyond would agree to some extent, that I haven't wanted to cast my eye towards the heavens and ask, is that all you've got? Because it feels like a bit of a pile on sometimes. But, and that's not with me or with this council in particular, it's the challenges that our community faces. So with that, my remarks. As we have heard, our administration continued the work of Budget 2016 and found new ways to do more with less. We continue to see hardship within our community, council knows it, and we continue to seek advice from our neighbors, business owners, and others in order to navigate our way through this particularly difficult set of circumstances. We know these are uncertain times, and we've taken steps as advocates to other levels of government to draw attention to the unique needs of our community. Your council has supported the Energy East Initiative. We've advocated strenuously for fair treatment during the Municipal Government Act review, and we are working closely with bio-industry leaders to bring opportunities to our community. In our inter-municipal relations, we continue to force, sorry, to be forceful in seeking fair cost-sharing arrangements that recognize the services provided by the Town of Drayton Valley create lasting benefits for the entire region. With some very substantial changes to the Municipal Government Act now passed into law just recently by the provincial government, 2017 will be a critical year for development of a regional collaborative framework that specifically acknowledges this principle of fairness. In January 2016, we opened the doors, or actually, it was a little bit later, but officially, I think it was open in January of 2016, the doors opened to the Clean Energy Technology Center, and we've positioned our region to be at the forefront of development in bio-industry. In this, we have been successful. Since opening the doors of the CETC has captured the interest of companies ranging from WestJet Airlines to locally-driven enterprise. Most recently, our very own successful Bio Composites Group has announced a contract to provide hemp-based fibromat products for use in the creation of automobile interior parts for General Motors in Michigan. Industry as we know it in our community is shifting, and our council is making progress to ensure that our community remains resilient and responsive to the ever-changing economic climate. While we work to continue to bring growth and interest to our area, this council has also endeavored to build capacity in the community. This means attending to the needs of today while responsibly planning for our longer-term requirements of tomorrow. So, for example, when we see green space redevelopment that revitalizes an entire neighborhood, or work on our water sewer infrastructure, our roads, or our recreational facilities, we are building capacity. We are making our community more resilient in the process. Public green spaces and other recreational amenities strengthen community connections, and that is vital when the community has been faced with a faltering economy and the hardship that ensues. They also serve as critical economic development infrastructure in attracting individuals and families to consider Drayton Valley as their new home. Business investors and families alike want to see a community that takes pride in itself and invests in quality of life. Still in the area of infrastructure, the fall, this past fall saw the official opening of our new state-of-the-art water treatment plant, otherwise known as the Center for Water Intelligence. This $26 million facility serves citizens of the entire region. The water treatment facility is one of a number of major infrastructure projects that came online in 2016. Others include the 43rd Avenue to the Ring Road extension. And in addition to those infrastructure elements, this council has also made a concerted effort to budget and plan for asset replacement and management over time. Specifically, we can identify a number of things, including the aquatic facility, landfill, additional work at the water treatment facilities by way of the High Lift Station. But it isn't just about hard infrastructure that occupies the minds of council. We have elevated the programming out of the Community Services Department, and we're very blessed to have some skilled individuals to do that work. That programming is by and large very low-cost, but very high return in resiliency and capacity-building effects in the community. For the past three years, this council has made consultation with the public a priority. Annually, we've conducted community budget consultations, online surveys, and other fora which help us better understand community priorities. Council and administration have worked hard to fairly represent those priorities in this budget. And as we have over the past three years, this council will continue to give its very best to Drayton Valley in 2017. With that, I might try this again next year, let's, we'll see. With that, this is our final opportunity for questions, comments of administration or just of a general nature before I entertain the motion. All right. We have the motion before us, all in favor? Opposed? We have one opposed. That is carried.
We will move on to item 6.3, Councilor Wheeler, Cost of Living Adjustment. Sorry.
That's okay, thanks. As part of the 2017 budget deliberations, council administration have closely reviewed all aspects of expense, control, and reduction with a view to achieving a balance between financial resources and management of expenses, which is reflective of the current economic climate and impacts on the broader community. In arriving at a balanced approach, it is recognized that the areas of salaries and benefits cost has and will remain a significant cost area for the town. Council has previously indicated and reaffirms in its views that staff layoffs are a last avenue to be considered in arriving at budgetary stability. Unfortunately, the revenue situation in 2016 was dire and is not anticipated to improve in 2017, thus impacting planned and merited increases to employees in the coming year. 2017 is the last year of the QP Collective Agreement, which calls for a 3.5 percent increase for union positions. Regrettably, the broader town situation does not allow for this increase to be considered for other out-of-scope staff, meaning non-union management employees as well as volunteer firefighters, without implementing layoffs of existing positions to compensate for increases. In 2015, council passed a resolution in keeping with the principles of Town Policy A071, such that the value and timing of general increases are at the discretion of Town Council. The resolution passed by council during the January 7, 2015, regular meeting regarding the current QP Local 2515 Collective Agreement whereby the Cost of Living Adjustment was applied to all employees of the town. Extraction from the minutes of the 2007 to January 7, 2015, regular meeting of council, item 7.4, page 4, Resolution 0815, council and Nado moved that council ratify the new 2015 to 2017 Collective Agreement between QP Local 2515 and the Town of Drayton Valley, as well as negotiated wage increases for the union and non-union staff, volunteer firefighter fighters, and management of the Town of Drayton Valley. Carried. Due to the wording in that resolution and to forego the negotiation, negotiated wage increase for non-union staff, volunteer firefighters, and management of the Town of Drayton Valley, administration recommends that a new resolution be passed to state the approach for this regard in the year of 2017. Therefore, I move that council, notwithstanding Resolution 0815 of January 7, 2015, withdraw the wage increase for non-union staff, volunteer firefighters, and management of the Town of Drayton Valley for 2017.
Thank you, Councilor Wheeler. Mr. Dibbin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilor Wheeler. In keeping with the approach of finding the right balance, this was one area that administration had to look at. Salaries and benefits, when we look at our financial roll-up of cost to the municipality, is one of our most significant cost drivers. It has been a driver that has increased, and increased significantly over the past number of years, not just attributable to a static complement, but also in terms of properly supporting policy decisions and services and programming that councils current and past have wanted for the community. I have appreciated council's support over this past year, that it has made known in chambers, in GMP, and also in staff meetings, about the context of the economic climate, but also their support for town staff, and that the absolute last place that would be looked at in terms of finding that right balance would be for layoffs for staff. The interim budget does contain a reduction of positions. It does not mean that anyone on staff today, though, is not going to be employed as of the beginning of 2017, which I am thankful for and appreciate council's support for in passing the interim budget. What it does mean, though, is that positions that we have had funded and vacant will not be filled. It does mean reductions to our seasonal workforce, so our hiring program for 2017 will not be as significant as it has been in past years. In fact, it will be halved, which will have impact to service frequency and service levels as we move through this in 2017. But one of the other aspects as well deals with, as the motion in 2015 aspect passed, the previously planned salary increases for out-of-scope employees will not be offered to 2017. We have, as administration, met with our management team as we move through these budget aspects, let them know that we are looking at all elements and all aspects of expenditures. And certainly from the management aspect, I was heartened by the fact that concern was not expressed for those individuals themselves, but for their staff that would be impacted by this decision should it come to pass. It's never easy to indicate and accept a 0 percent increase along those lines, and it is a struggle. It was a struggle for me, I'd be very frank with council too, in terms of looking at this and these other aspects about this approach versus a more targeted approach. But we do have a responsibility as administration to ensure that the services and policies that have been determined upon by council are still being provided. So I would just conclude my comments there, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, if there are any specific questions to regard to impact or elements along those lines, I'd be happy to field them.
Thank you, Mr. Dibbin. I have a, something that's just caught my eye in previously reading through the package. I have to confess, I didn't, I didn't pick up on this. The resolution calls for withdrawal of negotiated wage increases for union and non-union staff, volunteer firefighters, and management. I, you have?
I do, and my thanks to Councilor Wheeler. The motion that she made and read into the record actually was changed from the option that that was here. The motion that was made was to withdraw the wage increase for non-union staff, volunteer firefighters, and management. And my apologies to council for the error in the printed word, but my thanks to Councilor Wheeler for bringing that to my attention.
So Councilor Wheeler picked up on it?
She did.
And gave a motion that made more sense, and, well, at least on one level, and I didn't hear it. So, okay, we're all, we've come full circle. Good. Any other questions of Mr. Dibbin? Who's that? Council Fredrickson?
My question is, so if we're looking at a 3.5 percent reduction or freeze this year, that would be 3.5 percent that wouldn't be realized basically from every year going forward. If we should find ourselves in a wonderfully flush revenue situation, would we, is there power in this to consider an increase?
I do appreciate the sentiment, Council Fredrickson. Yes, you are correct that with not providing the previously agreed to 3.5 percent increase for out-of-scope employees, it is a lift that we will see over the period, and it does flatten out our expenditure profile and compounding costs when one considers attributed benefit costs and the like. I think as we go forward, like a number of aspects, we would take a look in the broader picture of what a change in economic fortunes, a change in some of the assumptions that are in the budget, and what that would mean holistically going forward. I, and this is my background in human resources, I think that the prudent and proper approach on human resources is a diligent and practical approach, and not one that simply defaults to a one-size-fits-all. We have different classes of employees, different work that we do do, and this is not a reflection on the town's approach, this is a reflection of public bodies generally, is that an awful lot of time and attention can be spent in one fora, that being largely a collected bargaining and union relations forum, and simply then applying that throughout the body of the enterprise. I think that that approach has seen its day. I think that going forward, what this approach affords the town is to look at the different work that we do and the different total rewards packages that we offer deliberately, and determine what a prudent approach is going forward.
I have a different answer, through a different lens to Council Fredrickson's question. It will be a council decision as and when required. Anything further for Mr. Dibbin? Councilor Long?
Thank you, not for Mr. Dibbin, but just to address this motion. I just want to, and I do support this, but I just want to be absolutely clear, that does not mean that I do not value the contributions made by our non-union staff over the last 12 months and over the many years previous to that. Unfortunately, this is just the way things are this year. I hope things are better next year.
Thank you. Councilor Neto?
Council Neto?
Similar, but I just wanted to comment to Mr. Dibbin. I appreciate that approach, coming from non-government position prior to this in the banking world. That's, that's not uncommon, and so I appreciate that approach moving forward, and I think that's, that's a sound strategy moving forward. I would like to say that this scope of this budget this year and this motion has been the hardest thing that I've contemplated. It's hard when you think of, you come to rely a lot of times on that increase as a family, and does not see that provided as hard. Ultimately, I think what is more important is that we keep the positions and jobs for our staff, and that's where our heart was, and it's hard to take your heart out of these as a counselor and just be that counselor that oversees the budget. That's not possible sometimes when you, we tend to want to lead with our heart in a lot of cases, and these are people that we value and respect, their contributions to our community and our organization. So we wanted to keep positions and that, and the stability for those employees and for all employees, quite frankly, so, and council took that hit as well. So we're on the same part with everybody. We didn't take that either, and we want to just commend our staff for the excellent job that we do and value, and at the end of the day, we felt that their positions and their stability was more important. So we led with our heart, but it still hurt.
Thank you. Anything further? I couldn't have said it better than the last two speakers, so I'll just leave it there. Administration in all its facets, the work that you do for the town is deeply appreciated, and we wouldn't want you to think otherwise. So we have the motion before us. Motion of Council Wheeler, all in favor? That is carried. We're going to go to item 6.4, and then I'll call a short break after that. 6.4, on the agenda indicates Counselor Bossert. She's asked me to engage another counselor by way of substitution on this because her voice is giving out this morning, so I'll turn it over to Counselor Schuler.
Thank you. Further to council request for review, administration reviewed the town's existing retirement policy A0211, which was adopted on December 14, 2011, determine whether it should be kept in its current form or amended or repealed in part or in its entirety. It's questionable as to whether the current retirement policy is consistent with the original intent and direction given by council when it was first enacted. While existing policy states the intention is to encourage thinking and planning for retirement, the impacts of the current policy are seen to be long-service award program rather than an effort to promote and engage discussion for staff at a retirement point in their careers, or alternately assist in succession planning activities when a change in workforce becomes necessary. From a fiscal sustainability perspective, a significant cash payment at the end of employee service with the town, and in-year uncertainty around when such a retirement decision may happen, is inconsistent with prudent financial management and sound HR practices, particularly given the paid leave and continuing benefit aspects of the current policy. As a long-service reward program, this approach may contribute to municipal sustainability by encouraging staff to continue their employment with the town to achieve a retirement benefit threshold. Legal counsel has been consulted concerning potential changes and the potential for rescinding the current retirement policy altogether, and has provided advice that a notice period of any change, or changes should be given prior to these changes coming into effect. If council wishes to adopt a replacement policy rather than simply eliminate the existing policy, proposed Retirement Voluntary Separation Policy A0316 would replace the existing retirement policy and come into force on June 1, 2017, if adopted as presented. Administration recommends that council approve the attached Retirement Voluntary Separation Policy A0316 as presented. There are a few options here, and I will go with the wishes of the counselor that was to read this, and I therefore move that council approve the Retirement Voluntary Separation Policy A0316 as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Schuler. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you. I believe that retirement is something that we all have to face at one time or another, and I think planning is important, and as a manager, I hope you're working with your departments to plan and see and work what's best with everyone, but I do not feel that having a monetary amount attached, and it's not specific but to each person, when they're retiring, is a, is a good incentive. So I would actually prefer that it was repealed in its entirety. I think that this is a cost that could have a huge effect. If we have two or three people that retire in the same year, and they're at the top of their wage grid, you could be looking at $300,000 because people are retiring, and I don't think that that's an effective use of our town resource dollars.
Mr. Dibbin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree, Councilor Wheeler. I think that programs and not able to speak to the rationale or the drivers that might have been of the day in 2011 when the policy was first enacted. The approach in the revised policy is not one of a mandatory entitlement. No threshold of employment would guarantee any kind of payment to a retiring employee. What the revised policy does do, I believe, is two things. One is it takes away from a mandatory approach to a permissive approach that would then provide the opportunity for a variety of reasons, in terms of looking at an individual employee, whether it be retirement, or whether it be for needs of succession planning, or workforce change, and hence the rebranding and reprofiling the revised proposal as a voluntary separation program. It does afford discretion admittedly into the hands of the chief administrative officer to review in either scenario whether or not a lump-sum payment, and only a lump-sum payment, not as the existing policy allows for a deferred or continued de facto period of salary continuation and partial benefits through a period of time. And I would freely confess my inner HR wonk to all of council in terms of structuring this type of an approach that then keeps the hands in, or the tools in the hands of the employer, rather than having no policy in place that then we would have to rely on common law or past precedent in legal matters to determine what a separation type of arrangement might be, particularly for longer service employees. In a defined environment that puts parameters about it, that does matter, and that does, that does weigh heavily, and ultimately, it does provide a tool for the CAO, and ultimately for senior management when looking at what approaches may be necessary going forward.
Thank you. Counselor Wheeler?
I hear that, but I also hear the weight that now it's on your shoulders that you get to pick and choose who gets that bonus potentially, and with the help of your management, and I understand that it's a tool that can be used, but I also try to look at fairness and judging, and I'm not sure that I would want that responsibility either, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I think you've aptly pointed out that the individual who has the ultimate discretion in the administration of the proposed policy is also the individual charged with presenting a budget to council, and so he's got to bear all things in mind. Anything further? Be quite frank, I struggle with this, with this one. I hearken back to when the existing policy was introduced to council, presented to council, and explained to council, and I guess without putting too fine a point on it, it did not live up to its billing, in my view. And so it's, it's absolutely clear to me that the existing policy cannot continue. The question, then, is really a matter of, is there a useful tool for matters of succession planning or, or otherwise, human resource planning, I'll call it, that can be made available to the CAO to make the workings of, of the administration more fluid, more adaptable? And, and is it, is there, does the, does the motion before us give the adequate notice period per the advice of legal counsel? It would seem that the answer is yes in both regards, but I feel like we're not done this yet. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Council Frederickson?
I, too, struggle with this one a bit, mainly because of my own, this is totally out of my wheelhouse. I've never had a position where a retirement package is actually part of the position. Typically, they've been contract positions, so that retirement planning has been put on my own shoulders to put money away for retirement. So I just, I'm trying to visualize what this would look like, like the, the current policy that's in place. You can visualize, okay, how this, how a payout would look like, whereas in this particular case, I'm just, I'm trying to visualize how the CAO would utilize this, and I think what Counselor Wheeler is really focusing on is that point number three that's talking about the actual incentive piece. Like, the other parts are talking about succession planning, I can understand that. It's the point number three, how would that, how would that be utilized as a, as a tool?
Mr. Dibbin?
I'll endeavor to answer that, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for pointing out of the proposed policy clause three. I think a couple of different approaches in the proposed policy versus the retirement policy as it currently exists. The policy that we have right now is not permissive. It directs that when certain thresholds are met, a payment will be made, and the retiring employee has an option of whether to take those monies as a lump-sum payment, or can defer that and take it as in effect salary continuation for either six months or one year. Clause three indicates that this is an incentive. It is not a entitlement, and it is not something that should be considered as gospel or granted. And it talks about an attempt in the language, it has tried to put retirement in the context of succession planning, in the longer-term needs of what the town may have. Hopefully, as an encouragement to employees that when contemplating retirement, and often this is not the case, that those retirement plans and their personal plans are kept close to an individual's chest, and they, you know, can and generally do file with very little notice or potentially ability of the town then to contemplate where to from here. I would very much like and want to see and have indicated to our leadership team, and certainly Human Resources has, with the assistance of software upgrades, is looking at a enhanced approach that helps inform our managers and supervisors as to when retirement for the purposes of our benefit plans can happen, whether by age or whether by years of service or a combination of those two. And an obligation that is stated in the current policy but really hasn't been enacted upon, that when that becomes an option, that management has a responsibility to engage. We have no ability and an employee is under no obligation to discuss or divulge their plans, but the hope is by looking at this in a different fashion, it becomes an engaged discussion of what those plans are that work for the employee and for the town. The language in 3.2, and I appreciate Counselor Wheeler's commentary earlier about talking about if an incentive is desirable, and yes, that does connote and imply that that is not necessarily a set criteria, but it does become a more fluid consideration of all the contexts and all the factors that are in place. And those would be brought to bear, and my hope, and ultimately I am answerable to council for financial decisions that are made, and anything that is done in salary and benefits along those lines is very transparent and very inclusive, and that would be my intention going forward, is to make sure that this would be known. But it does allow that flexibility. Again, not a requirement on the CAO's part to provide anything, and it's a revised perspective for employees that we would communicate to them coming forward, that there is not a formal expectation of a allowance or a benefit, pardon me, that would be coming at the end of retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Dibbin. Anything further? All right. Oh, Counsel Fredrickson, I guess if I hesitate, then I, yeah.
Okay, I'm still, I, yeah, so, and I know when, when this was brought forward at Governance Priorities, I had, the example I could pull on was in the private sector experience that families had with getting provided a package from oil and gas company or whatever, but the trigger point on that is typically the sale of a particular company. I'm trying to understand how this would work in a public sector situation. There's not, not really ever going to be a trigger point where it's sale, we're reducing our staff, we'll give you a package, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to, like, because what, my experience in the private sector, it doesn't really translate to the public.
Mr. Dibbin?
I'm not certain there's a analogous circumstance, private to public, that can be given other than in a public sector environment. Employment contracts are a tool that are utilized for members of a public sector workforce, just like they can be for a private sector workforce, and those employment contracts can specify such things as a retirement benefit, retirement allowance, salary continuation, or rule that up into a general section that may deal on departure or termination by other means. So it is looked at, it is done. A policy then, for a private-public sector entity, in my view, recognizes the fact that there are changes that occur in a public sector environment, just like a private sector environment, and we do restructure periodically. We do take a look and want to be diligent that our organizational structure is the best to reflect what the priorities and policies of council are. So there may be changes, and that may have workforce implications as well on a service delivery aspect, not necessarily on a financial restraint aspect along those lines. A policy in place can be used as a tool to help facilitate that in a timeframe that is more achievable. So that would be, from my chair, I'm from an administration perspective, the value of such a tool. It does have, though, a human resource charge that we may not always budget for and not have budgeted for, but then it would be the CAO's responsibility as well, that if undertaking that to understand what those charges are and how they would be paid for within budget.
We have a motion before us, then, and that is, if I've got it right, it's Option B? Okay. All right. All in favor? All opposed? Let's do that again. All in favor? Okay. Opposed. There we are. Motion is carried. Going to take a short break. 6.5, Counselor, who are we? Frederickson. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 6.5, Mackenzie Avenue Pavement Rehabilitation. Following the council's decision at November 2, 2016, regular meeting of council to rescind the awarding of Part A Mackenzie Avenue Pavement Rehabilitation Project, administration issued a new tender for the project. The original tender was broken down into two components, whereas the new tender was split into three components as follows. Schedule A being the portion of Mackenzie Avenue from west of 48th A Str-.
Schedule A being the portion of McKenzie Avenue from west of 48th A Street to 55th A Ave; Schedule B being 40th Street from 55th A Ave to 55th Ave; and Schedule C being 40th Street from 55th Ave to Meyer Ave, and Meyer Ave from 44, or 40th Street to 55th Ave. Five tenders, yeah. Five tenders are received on November 24, 2016, each broken down into three parts. The tenders received are reflected below and exclude GST. The tenders are noted in the agenda package. The low overall tender, which from Parkway Enterprises, limited at the amount of $1,074,495.54 plus GST for the total project, so that's parts A, B, and C. The funding source for the original tender was to be the infrastructure lifecycle rehabilitation account, which is largely grant funding from the provincial and federal governments. The total bid for this project would exceed carryforward monies from 2016 to 2017. Administration is cautious about proceeding on the entire project without grant funding certainty next fiscal year. Accordingly, administration is basing its recommendation on the anticipated grant monies we will be carrying forward, thereby reducing the exposure of the town's operating account. Therefore, administration recommends awarding Schedule A and B of the McKenzie Avenue pavement rehabilitation project to Parkway Enterprises, limited in the amount of $770,955.53 plus Therefore, I move that award, that, sorry. Therefore, I move that the town awards Schedule A and B to Parkway Enterprises, limited in the amount of $770,955.53 plus GST.
Thank you, Counselor Fredrickson. Any discussion on this motion? Did Mr. Gibbon or Mr. Fraser wish to comment?
I'll maybe just make one, one comment and turn it over to Mr. Fraser, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, the town is desirous to see all elements of the project proceed. The decision to re-tender did result in an overall lower project cost versus earlier in 2016. We will endeavor, even with this motion, if it is passed, along those lines, to do two things. One is keep a very watchful eye on what the provincial, federal budget announcements are in 2017, and whether or not additional grant monies in known or new programs are coming that might allow us to look at the rest of the project, but also have discussions, if awarded, with the successful bidder to determine whether or not pricing and that option can be preserved in a contractual approach going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Anything?
No, nothing really further to add. I think it's logical that we do parts A and B first, just through the age of the infrastructure and so forth. And like Mr. Gibbon was saying, we would look at, if there is funding availability, we'd look at options, I guess, with the, potentially with the contractor, if they were willing to undertake, you know, Section C, if funding become available, but we're trying to leave our options open, so.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Schuler?
Yeah, just, just for clarity's sake, could we have Counselor Fredrickson read the motion one more time?
I'm the one that injects levity in these proceedings. I do a bang-up job of it, too. Was there a question or anything? Okay. Just messing around. Counselor Wheeler, and then we'll get there.
Could administration just quick speak to what this includes besides paving? I think we tend to think about just paving, but there is other aspects.
Sure. Well, it's going to involve some replacement of the existing curb, which is damaged in sections. It's going to involve some replacement of some sidewalk in the worst locations. It's going to involve some extra catch basins down in an area that is kind of prone to, I guess, I don't know, overtopping if there's a severe rainfall. We're also going to be--
When you say overtopping, you mean--
Overtopping.
Undesirable accumulations of water on the surface, is it?
That's essentially what I'm saying. We're essentially overtops a curb in an undesirable area. Undesirable area for this to happen.
See, that's how it's done. It's Christmas, we need to, okay. Sorry, continue.
Okay. And as well, we're going to not only rely on extra catch basins in that area, we're actually going to put a defined swale in the road to also facilitate the carrying of water in intense rainfall situations. And there'll be some, you know, new painted crosswalks and line markings and so forth.
Very good. Counselor Fredrickson, did you have a question?
Brief.
All right.
I just want to note that this project, I'm happy to see this project coming forward. It's a focus, going back to what we were talking about in the budget discussions, of rehab of existing assets. And for those who have driven or walked on McKenzie Ave, it's definitely a patchwork of pavement that has been patched and over the course of years, so it's great to see this come forward. And I also just would like to commend our administration for taking advantage of financial realities and being able to re-tender this project, as well as sheltering the town from any sort of unnecessary expenses.
Thank you. Anything further? All right. We have a motion before us. All in favor? That is carried. Item 6.6, Counselor Natto.
Thank you, Mayor. The Clean Energy and Technology Center and Norquest College have been working together under the joint venture agreement that was approved by council in May 2015. The joint venture agreement expired in June 2016, and both Norquest and the town administration have been working together to prepare the agreement for renewal. Norquest College is ready for the agreement to be approved, and the CTC committee has reviewed the draft agreement. The joint venture agreement outlines how the joint venture structure will operate and the services that will be provided under this relationship. Norquest College provides credit programming separately and also has a separate agreement to lease space at the CTC to deliver credit programs. The agreement requires the approval of council and is here today for review and consideration by council. As usual, several options presented, but I move that council approve the joint venture agreement between Norquest College and the Town of Drayton Valley as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Natto. Any discussion on this motion? Did you have a question? You have a question on your face? Okay.
I'm just waiting for any sort of comment that you bring forward.
There's-- All right. Now I know how grade four teachers feel coming up on the holidays. All in favor? That is carried. Moving on. Item 6.7, Counselor Long.
Thank you very much. By law, 2011-18B of the Town of Drayton Valley establishes the Mayor's Advisory Committee. The Mayor's Advisory Committee consists of 11 members who shall be appointed by a resolution of Town Council for either a two- or three-year term. The committee consists of members from the following categories: Town of Drayton Valley, Brazos County, Ministerial Association, youth, seniors, the mayor, and the deputy mayor. Excuse me. The appointments of Randy Rye, Kathy Howie, Jay Harris, and Bernie Shell have expired as of October 2016, resulting in four vacancies in the representative categories of the Town, Brazos County, Ministerial Association, and seniors. Vacancies have been advertised, and six applications were received from the following, well, one application each was received from the following individuals: Christina Gallivan, Randy Rye, Bernie Shell, Jay Harris, Norma Block, and, I hope I get this right, Ashra Fullham. A few options here, I'm going with option one for those of you who are reading along. That's the council appoint Randy Rye to the Mayor's Advisory Committee as the representative for the Ministerial Association for a two-year period ending October 31, 2018. The council appoint Bernie Shell to the Mayor's Advisory Committee as a representative for the senior demographic for a two-year period ending October 31, 2018. And the council appoint Ashra Fullham and Jay Harris to the Mayor's Advisory Committee as representatives for the Town of Drayton Valley and Brazos County respectively for a two-year period ending October 31, 2018.
Thank you, Counselor Long. Any discussion on this motion? All right. All in favor? That is carried. Item 6.8, Counselor Schuler.
Thank you, worship. On December 6, 2016, the Alberta Government passed amendments to the Municipal Government Act. In advance of the passing of the Modernized Municipal Government Act, MMGA, the Town of Drayton Valley initiated and will continue conversations with Brazos County regarding existing and potential intermunicipal agreements, such as the intermunicipal cooperation agreement, the intermunicipal development plan, and various cost-sharing agreements. Although the intermunicipal collaboration framework is a mandatory regional planning mechanism established within the MMGA, it does not address many of the issues foremost for many urban communities, nor does it provide enhancements to regional cooperation as indicated early in the review process. A regulation will be generated to set out how each ICF must establish minimum requirements regarding intermunicipal land use planning, minimum list of services to be considered on a regional basis, a dispute resolution process for when partnering municipalities cannot agree, timelines for completion, authority to exempt municipalities in certain cases and other matters as required. Within a two-year timeframe mandated by the province for the compulsory implementation of ICFs, urban municipalities such as Drayton Valley will continue to rely on good graces of neighboring municipalities and other levels of government to provide needed services to our region, regional population. Given the extended period of uncertainty we'll continue, rather than allow the uncertainties of external support to dictate Drayton Valley's opportunities, it is recommended our municipality take a proactive approach in preparing for future economic and environmental variabilities and the, excuse me, and the potential impacts for taxpayers. Efforts with respect to regional collaboration must consider that long-term viability of Drayton Valley is of paramount importance, including such things as our future growth prospects, the economic impact for our taxpayers, and our strength as a community. Administration recommends that council direct a deliberate and purposeful analysis of all options available to the municipality in keeping with ensuring long-term sustainability and viability of the Town of Drayton Valley. I therefore move, having technical difficulties here, just one sec, that council direct administration to review and report on service and governance options for the future benefit of residents and businesses of the Town of Drayton Valley and the broader community. Included in this report will be any options that may be identified during the course of the review. Administration is asked to report to Town Council as soon as practical.
Thank you, Counselor Schuler. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Schuler?
Just, I guess, a direction, or not a direction, a question to administration. Can you give us, you know, potentially some examples of what these options may be?
One of the, one of the questions that I think arises right now, Counselor, out of the passage of the Modernized Municipal Government Act, is what is the content of the regulations that will be forthcoming? As has been discussed and pointed out, and not just, I think, in Town of Drayton Valley context, but provincial-wide in workshops and other discussions that have occurred, the original thoughts and ideas of what would come out of the MGA review have not necessarily been expressed in terms of what the amendments that were passed earlier this month by the provincial government. As such, we may not know until the regulations are fully out as to what all of those options are. However, in terms of, you know, the direction that council may give to administration in undertaking this work, is we would need to go into current legislation in terms of governance and service elements that are there to analyze and explore what they might mean in the context of the Town of Drayton Valley. One of the, one of the interesting aspects that I'm not sure it's precluded by this motion would be the desire on the part of Town Council to know what all options may be, including a furtherance of our existing relationships and agreements, and not just with our immediate neighbors, but with other municipalities and other partners as well, in terms of different aspects of town operations, financial sustainability and future viability as well. The timeframe of the ICFs that are referenced in the new legislation is really what is of concern and the uncertainty that a further two-year period, once we know what the regulations may specify or state or allow, to get to an understanding of, even then, what may be possible. And that's just part of the difficulty. As we, as we talked about earlier in the budget presentation and the situation financially that the town is currently looking at, certainty or the degree that we can possibly get certainty is always appreciated, but it's no, by no means being provided to us currently. So it behooves us just to understand exactly where we are, what a current approach and context is, but then what's the whole gamut of options before us? I'm not sure if that fully answers your question, other than I would view the motion as a direction to go forward and, you know, prospect and see exactly what is the gamut and suite of options that we could take a look at.
Counselor Schuler?
That partially answers, I guess. I'm just wondering how, how far administration is going to go on that. Are they going to look at things such as dissolution or amalgamation? Is that, is that something that could be looked under the, you know, at, under this?
In response to that, Mr. Mayor, currently, those are two options. One could view those as both governance and financial options in both those aspects that are in the act, and that would be a part of what we would be directed to look at, yes.
I think the, I'll get, I see. The intent of this, this backgrounder and the resolution, to my mind, is a recognition of the fact that there are some significant gaps in the, in the new amendments to the Municipal Government Act. The amendments, such as they are, as have been passed just recently in the legislature, direct municipalities such as ours to enter into an intermunicipal collaboration framework with our municipal neighbors. That framework, as described in the backgrounder, has potentially a number of facets to it, and the ways in which those different facets can be addressed are, we are told, are going to be outlined in regulation. So the amendments that have been passed don't yet give us clarity on that. What we are seeking here is for administration to help council to do its job on behalf of the citizens of Drayton Valley, and that is to be, to responsibly explore the future from a governance and service level perspective. So what is, if you wanted to simplify the question, what is the best arrangement for the people of Drayton Valley and the broader community from both governance and service level provision? So I expect administration's exploration of these questions is going to be fulsome, is going to cover a broad swath of legislative and other terrain. And when we hear your report back, I have every expectation that we'll be sharing the results of that report publicly in one form or another. With that, Counselor Fredrickson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like how this is very broad. It allows administration to look at many different things. I just want to make a note, just for the public, that our regional differences that we have between Drayton Valley, Brazos County, financial discrepancies, differences and focuses in strategic direction is not, is the norm. We are not the exception. We are not the exception. The more that you go around to other municipalities, the more that you see that there are differences between the rural and urbans. And some of those come out of things that are currently in the current MGA, such as the cost for policing and those kind of things, and the linear assessments as well. What I would really like to see out of this, and I had said this at the joint council in September, that we need to look at some of our agreements, the cost-sharing agreements, to really explore the capital, sharing capital costs. I would also really like to look at those municipalities that are the exceptions. When we were doing the budget consultation, a number of people are asking me, why can't we be like White Court? Why don't we have what White Court has? Well, White Court and Woodlands County have very strong relationship. They have revenue-sharing pieces, policies in place. Same with Rocky Mountain House and, is it Clearwater County? They have revenue-sharing in place. So there's these opportunities that I think we are getting stuck in the squabbling of who's paying for what, rather than looking forward at how can we share in the bounty that this whole region has. And that is something that I really look forward to administration bringing forward is we have been, our community has been so exceptional in so many ways, and we've seen that with the Fort McMurray fires, the banding together, our tour of Alberta. We have so many exceptional things that it just strikes me as a frustration that we always end up getting stuck on the who's paying for what point. So I would really, I'm looking forward to this, and I appreciate the broadness that administration is taking and looking at all the options.
Anything further on this? All right, all in favor? That is carried. And I look forward to Mr. Dibbin's report the first week of January. No, I'm kidding. Might take a bit longer. Yeah, yeah. All right, yeah. All right. Thank you, council. I think that was a very important indication to our community that we are concerned about the future, about the future of the region, and we want to be as best prepared for it as a municipality can be. And to do the responsible work, the homework that's required to understand what can be done to improve regional prospects, that's the responsible thing to do. That's why we're here. So, look forward to it. 6.9, Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you. The Alberta Community Partnership Grant, ACP, is designed to support municipalities in attaining new or enhanced regional municipal services, improve municipal capacity to respond to municipal and regional priorities, and achieve effective intermunicipal relations through joint collaboration activities. With council support, administration would agree to jointly submit an application for the IDP Intermunicipal Development Plan Review Project with Brazzo County to receive funding through the ACP grant program. Brazzo County is being the managing partner. To meet the required annual schedule for, renewal schedule for the IDP and to align with the new legislation and updated planning policies in both the Town of Drayton Valley and Brazzo County, administration recommends the update of the IDP, which under the renewal schedule is due in 2017. The IDP review project will result in collaboration between the Town of Drayton Valley and Brazzo County to reassess future land use areas in the fringe area, in consultation with the public, establish updated dispute resolution processes, and provide a concise planning framework for both municipalities. The maximum funding for this program is $200,000, and the IDP review project would be asking for a grant of up to $100,000. ACP grant applications must be submitted by December 16, 2016. No late applications will be accepted. Applications must be accompanied by a resolution of council supporting the IDP review project. Brazzo County Council has already approved a similar motion. Funding from the ACP grant program would allow for an IDP review without putting an extra financial burden on either municipality. As per Section 631.1 of the MGA, two or more councils may, by each passing a bylaw in accordance with this part or in accordance with Section 12 and 692, adopt an intermunicipal development plan to include those areas of land lying within the boundaries of these municipalities as they consider necessary. The MGA also requires, as per Section 636.1, that the municipality inform any person who may be affected to allow for input, including the public, school boards, and adjacent municipalities. The current IDP was created in May 2011. The IDP states Brazzo County and the town council shall jointly undertake a review and update of the IDP within five years of the date of adoption, which under the renewal schedule is June, or is due in 2017. A review of the IDP will allow the Town of Drayton Valley and Brazzo County to ensure that the IDP is meeting their needs now and in the future. Accordingly, administration is recommending that council support the IDP review project and the application for funding through the ACP grant program. Therefore, I move that council support the intermunicipal development plan, review project, and the application for funding through the Alberta Community Partnership Grant Program.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. Any discussion on this motion? Mr. Dibbin.
Just one quick comment, Your Worship. What, not just in terms of continuing and trying to foster aspects and areas where we can work jointly together, but this change to the ACP program that does allow, typically we have looked at capital and capital works types of activities, but with an option to also take a look at this to help offset operational costs and aspects along those lines became very attractive to us as well. We appreciated the Brazzo County administration forwarding this opportunity and this idea forward, as well as their willingness to be the lead partner and lead applicant on the project. And if council is supportive as well, then we would be a cosponsor and sign on to that in a fashion that would allow us to jointly submit before the end of the week.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dibbin, and I think it bears repeating that within the intermunicipal collaboration framework that has been directed by the province for municipalities such as ours and our neighbors, a key component of that framework is an intermunicipal development plan. And so this is work that we will have to undertake anyway by virtue of the recent amendments to the Municipal Government Act. So what better way to get it done than through provincial dollars? Any discussion? No? All right, all in favor? That's carried.
Department reports, 7.1, Engineering and Development, Mr. Fraser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe before I get into it initially here, I did hand out a sheet about the development There were one related to commercial interior renovations and installation of signage, another one related to basement development. As for business licenses, there was one for underground installation, shallow utilities, one for automated traffic enforcement, another one for directional drilling, and the last one for an oilfield service trucking firm. That pretty much concludes our permits. With respect to, are there any questions on the permits? Not that I might necessarily have the answer right at hand, but I can always find it out for you.
Don't think so.
Okay. Thank you. With respect to utilities, we completed the desludgeing of Cells 1 and 2 at the end of October. The desludgeing process went well. We don't have to, we don't expect to have to desludge these cells again until around 2026, so roughly about 10 years. As for Cells 3 and 4, we don't see an immediate need to be desludgeing them, and they may last for up to 20 years without desludgeing, but we can monitor the situation. With respect to Cell 4 berm, we are reviewing it by consultants. That's where we have sloughing on one side on Cell 4. They are determining a plan of action to undertake further investigation and implement repairs. They're coming up with various cost estimates, trying to figure out a strategy of when to do it and all the work required. It is anticipated that the work will involve draining the cell and reestablishing the clay liner, basically draining it, bringing in fresh clay that needs to be fairly dry and packed, and reinforcing the berm. So that work wouldn't happen until the weather is dry in the new year, and obviously we'd be hoping for an extended period of dry weather for that to occur. With respect to the southwest portion of the South Trunk Line, we were looking at infiltration issues there, and we targeted 13 manholes, which were the most problematic in terms of infiltration. Some were like sunk at low levels and water was regularly flowing into the manhole. So we raised a number of them, sealed a lot of them, and graded the soil around the manholes to prevent further inflow and infiltration. That work was completed in early November. We feel that a combination of this desludgeing work and addressing the infiltration issues should assist the performance and capacity of our wastewater treatment facility. We also performed hydroflushing of the sanitary line in the vicinity of the Little Lions Park down to the pool area, preparing it for CCTV camera work. So that's the type of camera that goes into the line and takes pictures of its condition. So we're trying to figure out, you know, the current status of the interior condition of the lines, whether it's corroded, whether lots of roughness factors and so forth, all part of the planning for, you know, future maintenance, asset management in the area. The camera work unfortunately had to be deferred until December 19 due to the cold weather. We expect hopefully around that time that we should have an extended period of warmer weather. It has to be above minus 15 to properly work. We're going to be looking carefully at the interior roughness, joints, and conditions of manholes. As well, Utilities has been busy with routine maintenance with the water and wastewater facilities. They've been updating their safe work procedures, and they've had three tours of the water plant in the last months, and everyone that came seemed to be suitably impressed. As well, Public Works, Parks, and Utilities had a joint safety meeting and staff meeting on December 7. So that worked out well in terms of the integration of the two departments. With respect to Public Works, they've been busy sanding, flooding the downtown outdoor ice rink, clearing snow around the Discovery Park ice rink and helped volunteers flood it, put signs up on the exterior rink as well as at various ponds for skating, performed sidewalk sweeping, and getting ready for the eventuality of seasonal parking bans, putting the posts up, but I've discouraged them from putting signs up. So I understand they put two or three up. I've asked them to take it down until we're ready to go full steam. With respect to engineering, as discussed this morning, the Mackenzie Avenue paving contract was reviewed, and we made the recommendation for awards. So we'd like to thank council for awarding that contract for schedules A and B. The curbside collection RFP proposals were reviewed and analyzed. We negotiated with the best value proponents, and actually the contract was signed late And we are working with our county and our consultants to firm up design on the ring road alignment, realignment. As for planning and development, we are working with an outside consultant to complete work on the Debe Lands area structure plan, working with the county as discussed on the joint proposal for the ACP funding to update the intermunicipal development plan, and we're continuing to work with our consultants and exterior agencies and jurisdictions on the finalization of the 50th Street ASP. I do have also an update I just received from our sustainability coordinator about the women in leadership, so I'd like to share that with you. I just have to grab it here. So she advises me that she's, what's happening today on the women in leadership program is she's been working with the schools and developing the curriculum for the program. She is still waiting for some response back from them, but she feels, and that slowed the process down a bit, but she feels that the program is still on track. In January, she and Jessica Doucette from the Health Unit will be hosting three meetings with the mentees at both high schools prior to the start of the mentorship rotations. At those meetings, they will be showing some videos on female leadership and discussing what some of the issues are with being a female wanting to enter into positions of power, authority, responsibility. She will be hosting a meeting with all the mentors the first or second week of January. Meeting invite is anticipated to be sent out next week. Potential mentors have been sending her the dates that they are available or not available in January, so she's kind of working with that. The mentorship rotations will start in February. Students will complete one rotation per month, that's one and a half hours each over the course of the year until December. As last year, students will complete rotations with a counselor, a lady from the business community, and a lady from the nonprofit community. She is still in the process of recruiting mentors. The two schools, Frank Matic and Holy Trinity, will be recommending seven students each to participate in the programs so as to line up with the seven counselors. That concludes my, all right, thank you very much.
Counselor Schuler, did you have a question?
Yeah, just, just on the desludgeing, I thought there was information brought forward in one of our GMPs that the desludgeing was going to be done on an annual basis and that there was money put into the budget for that. So I'm a little confused saying that we're not going to have to do it for 10 years. I guess which is it? Do we, can we take that, those funds out and utilize them elsewhere or reduce our tax rate?
Mr. Fraser?
Sorry, unless I'm missing something, I didn't think we had annual, we, I had funds in the budget for next year initially for desludgeing, but we actually advanced the work till this year, and they are not required every year. They're required like on, he said, on Cells 1 and 2 about every 10 years and 20 or longer for Cells 3 and 4. And Cells 3 and 4 are apparently in good condition in that regard.
So are you saying that we did not budget for annual desludgeing? Because I think that's what.
I do not recall, unless I'm completely mistaken of something. I know we're trying to budget annual costs for the High Lift Pump Station and for acquisition of land for future, maybe a future cell for Cell Number 6, but I'm, I don't have an annual number in our operations budget for desludgeing. It's not required every year.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mr. Dibbin, then I'm going to go back to Counselor Schuler.
I will need to clarify that for you, Counselor. What Mr. Fraser has reported today is different than what was given to us by the Utilities Manager earlier this fall in terms of what the requirements are for desludgeing of our wastewater cells. So we will clarify that aspect. I do believe as of the last detail that I saw, we do have budgetary operational dollars for desludgeing activities. We do not just desludge, though, in the polishing cells. We also look at the ponds, and we look at other aspects as well. So there are annual considerations, but we'll clarify what the differences are between the two and what the programs are.
Counselor Schuler.
Okay, thank you. Can you also then find out, when was the last time that these were deslodged? Because part of, my understanding, part of our drainage issue had to do with the fact that the cells had not been deslodged and needed to be. So can we find out when it was done previous to us doing it this year?
All right.
All right. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you very much.
This is going to be good.
Just to go back to the budget question, initially there were significant funds budgeted for desludgeing in 2017, but as the budget evolved and the work was moved forward, that was significantly reduced if not eliminated. So.
Thank you. All right, Community Services and FCSS, whoop, sorry, do you have a question? Sorry, pardon, you're not off the hook. Sorry.
Just about the Women in Government, the program, or leadership, I'm just wondering, what if, so you have seven people, 14 total, that'll be assigned to seven counselors? What if there is the event of a counselor being unavailable? Or is there going to be more that are going to be doubling up, or how do you foresee that?
I'll have to discuss that with Dinette. I really don't have an answer ready for that, but I can follow up with it.
Good point. Okay. Community Services and FCSS, Teresa Dunlop.
Thank you.
Been waiting patiently. Thank you.
That's all right. So just some news from FCSS, and I think the mayor put out a memo last week as well. Dr. Unger, who most of you know, his team has successful, been successful in receiving the Canadian Institute of Health Research, which is a five-year grant. This project is going to involve two communities in South Africa, Cambridge, Ontario, and Assandrayton Valley. The proposal's goal is to understand how children and youth are resilient and how it relates to the production, the transportation, the processing, and the consumption of the petrochemicals in our area. So that's very exciting. He's going to focus on sort of resilience, the challenges, plus the positive ways that our young people are adapting to all of these changes in our community and the potential positive outcomes from the industry. So that's very exciting news. On our homelessness front, Homeless and Poverty Reduction Coordinator has received some good news as well. Our application for $75,000 for a preconstruction grant through Services Canada's Rural and Remote Funding Stream has been awarded to Drayton Valley. So this is going to take place right away. This allows us to do a feasibility study on the possible community hostel, perhaps transition housing, so we're leaving that sort of open to see whether that's going to be able to happen here in Drayton Valley. So hopefully that addresses some of the concerns we saw this morning of tent cities or those kinds of situations. So Josh Brennerd from the ARDN will be speaking to GMP on January 25th, should you have more comments and questions for that project. On the ECDC front, they are going to partnership with the Wild Rose School Division in a new program that we're calling Mighty Learners. We're very excited about that. It's slated to begin with the fall of 2017. Now, this program's going to supplement the current kindergarten program, which is usually two days in that school. So on those alternate days, parents can opt to have some quality care, some best early intervention services, some holistic care on the alternate days to that school-based kindergarten program. But the staff from ECDC will be working very closely with the teachers so that we can get some kind of integrated program there. The vision is that each child who comes through the door will join a community of children, families, and teachers engaged in the joy, work, and wonder of childhood. So we're very excited about that. I just wanted to say that I'm very proud of the working group. These ladies have had a really rough, as the mayor alluded to, it's one of those 2016s where sometimes you do look up because on a daily basis, they have been faced with families who are really struggling to cope in our community, and the ladies have gone out of their way to make sure that each family, each individual that comes through the door either tries to find a gas card, so where they can get food, where they can get lodging for the night, and how their family can cope with the fact that perhaps they lost their job and daycare is now up in arms. So we've done quite a lot of innovative things to try to do that. I'm very proud of the ladies, plus the fact that they've gone out of their way to take cooperation and looked at all of these different areas to cooperate with the people in our community, to write these grants, to get these grants, and to get these new programs going. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, thank you. Economic Development, Eric Burton.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So I wanted to highlight one key thing that has happened over the recent weeks, and that was that we had what I think is a very successful tourism roundtable. We had about two dozen people come out, and I want to thank your worship and members of council and senior management for showing their support and enthusiasm for developing the tourism sector. What we did was we used this as an opportunity to build capacity by connecting some dots, but also do some preliminary strategic planning. We did an asset inventory with the group. We worked through a SWOT analysis, and everybody left with a next step for them to pursue. And so I think that is going to really help build the next steps so that we're building the capacity. We have asked for feedback and gotten a lot of really positive feedback from participants. We had people from the arts community, people from the local parks, people from the tourism sector, from the Tourism Hospitality Association, and then we had representatives from the province and travel Alberta and the county and some entrepreneurs throughout. So I'm really excited. I feel that the momentum is really building. There was a lot of energy in the room, and people who have been working hard behind the scenes to move forward tourism for quite some time, really felt energized and felt that there is some new wind in our sails. So I'm looking forward to seeing how I can contribute to keeping up that momentum and building the capacity of the community. And I think that's really the key piece here is because if the community broadly works together, then tourism is going to emerge as a key sector, right? And that's what we're starting to see happen. So that's the highlight of what's happened in recent weeks.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right. Counselor McMillan?
Just a comment, the tourism roundtable was a great success, I felt. Nice to see, it was not the hugest group, 20, 24 people, something like that, but diverse and not just the usual suspects that show up at all these things. So I look forward to talking about it later in the week, but I thought it was a very successful event, and thanks for your effort there.
Okay, and yeah, shout out to our communications team who really worked hard to spread the word. I did ask people where they were finding out about this, and a lot of them did say from our online presence, so that's certainly having an impact.
All right. Excellent. Thanks very much. We have Emergency Services, Chief Thompson.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just one thing to report, unfortunately I don't have the stats for you for last month. The flu bug has hit my department, so we have several people that are down and out. Once they're back and healthy, we'll have those stats for you. Just one thing to announce, tomorrow night is the Candy King Check Stop, our annual program that we do every year with the RCMP EMS Victim Services and a host of other people who put all that together. We will be running the program from 4 o'clock to 7 o'clock tomorrow night, so if you're driving through, we will look forward to seeing you.
Excellent.
That's my report.
Thank you. Administration, we have Tyler Russell, Communications and Marketing.
Good morning, Council and Administration. Here's our Communications and Marketing report for December 14th. It's good to see you all again. We have our budget messaging that has been compiled and ready to go. I know that there is a copy in front of each and every one of you this morning, and thank you for all your feedback throughout the entire process. I do really, really appreciate that as it does go on. Also, Administration, so there's been so many members of Administration that have been able to help me and help my department to be able to make sure we get some great messaging out there, so I do appreciate that. By end of day, we will have our website updated to be able to reflect all of those changes. I know that last council meeting, that Council Fredericksen did have interest on some of our social media and website information. Some of our social media, we'll start with that. The analytics and the insights that are on most social media are quite good. Unfortunately, on Instagram and Twitter, they're not as detailed, but on Facebook, we are able to be able to have a lot more insight to what our presence is and what we're doing. We do actually have six separate pages that are being used through the Town of Drayton Valley. They are our page, the Park Valley Pool, Clean Energy Technology Center, Total Works Fitness, the ECDC, and also the Omniplex. I'll just focus on our page that we use here in the Town of Drayton Valley, though I do help a lot of the other departments kind of craft their messages, decide on their content, drive them in the proper directions when it does come to social media. Right now, at the Town of Drayton Valley, we have 2,142 likes. On average, per month, we are garnering 21 new likes, which is very, very good compared to some of the other municipalities that I was able to look at. Also, our reach per month is about 22,000, which is very, very good numbers, especially for a municipality of 7,000 people. That is absolutely great. If you want to know what reach is, it's how many people that we're actually touching with our content based on our posts that we make each and every day. Also, we do have our engagement, the amount of activity that we are actually taking place through our social media portal, just through Facebook. 6,895 is our number. That is a very, very good number. Also, we have our page views, which is the number of website clicks that we get to our specific website from our social media. It's 391 per month, which is also very, very good views. For that, we do spend a lot of time to be able to decide on our messaging and how we are able to drive that. Also, we have, I do have some website information for Council as well and also for Administration, just kind of the overreaching messages that are there that we do have. Our demographic is 25 to 34 that we do serve. Also, our daily average page views are about 115 per day, which translates into about 3,450 per month. That's a little bit different from when we, last summer, which the reason why we had 19,000 page views was because of the Fort McMurray evacuation center that we did have right here in Drayton Valley. People were using our website to be able to access the information that they needed, and I just wanted to say thank you to, you know, Community Services and a lot of the other departments for providing us with information to be able to keep that content as updated as we possibly could. It was about 19,000 page views per month during that month with the Fort McMurray evacuations. And I know certain members of Administration were really excited about this and also Council, our app information. I know that everybody was really excited about that. We're up to about 1,108 right now on our downloads that we have for this entire year. Apple has got 829, and then Google Play 279. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Question, is Counselor Fredericksen?
Just a comment, thank you for providing that information. I know I asked that at the last council meeting, and I think it really just shows the strength of our online presence and our social media and as a really strong avenue that we can really send those messages out. So thank you for that.
Counselor Nadel.
You had mentioned that Instagram and Twitter, you're not able to get some statistical information, so I'm wondering, do you, I guess there's no really way of knowing, like I know in our community, Facebook, we're a Facebook community, and I know other communities are stronger, have a stronger presence in other social media. I'm just wondering, is there a push that we're looking at to bring us onsite, or are there campaigns or how we integrate that with some of our, I'm just wondering, how do we get kind of a fuller spectrum of people that are actually using those other mediums?
There is always a lot of research, and I know that there was, with one of the council reports, there was information on utilizing social media to its fullest ability, and I find that Instagram is where people are orientated to at this point, and as soon as they start coming up with better insights and analytics to it, I will be, I will be the happiest camper because it actually, it's great to be able to report back and let you know who is using it. I find that Instagram is more of a two-way conversation or is generally a conversation, which is why we're able to utilize that much more effectively.
Anything further? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Diven?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything new going on?
There's a couple things that I just want to take a couple moments on, much like what Chief Thompson had said about the fire hall, certainly this time of year, we have had sporadic attendance from some of our staff back and forth, and the folks that are in the room today are reflective of some of the diehards that have had to soldier through with budget process and aspects along those lines. So effective this weekend, some folks will be going on some much deserved leave in advance of the Christmas holidays that are afforded to us, and so I think a lot of folks are looking forward to that. One element just further to Mr. Fraser's report on curbside collection and late yesterday, us arriving at a new approach, a new contract, just in terms of the magnitude and with Council, we recall that they had mandated Administration within certain financial parameters that are reflected in the minutes, but up to over a five-year period, $1.65 million to cover the servicing costs. When one looks at the servicing costs of our new five-year contract, starting off with a 2017 amount of 2,600 collection bins, our annual cost projected to go up 2% per year will come in far under that. In fact, the true service cost for the same level of service will be just slightly over $1 million. If we consider and contemplate our capital costs, and prior to this council may be aware that we had a bin rental arrangement in place that at the conclusion of the contract resulted in the bins not being the town's property, this has been addressed by Mr. Fraser and the infrastructure manager, that if we include the capital costs at the end of five years, we, and I believe a capital lease would be the most appropriate way to characterize it over the five years, but we will own the bins at the conclusion of the five-year contract, and even factoring in the capital costs, we will still be, I believe, rough math would tell me in excess of $300,000 below what the financial parameters were, looking at it along those lines. So in keeping with the theme about finding the right balance, looking at what our existing service provision is, and determining whether or not we can do the same or more for less, this is a great example, that the engineering department has been able to land and secure. So I just would extend that out and also to Sonia, who is not here today for all the work that she's done on this project over the last few months. One other element that I want to update Council on is the ongoing safety investigation concerning asbestos materials in the Omniplex storage shed. The safety coordinator has been diligently concluding his work around the investigation, completing the interviews and the active investigation process, and was very nearly done the reporting when we received word that an occupational health and safety inspector was attending to Drayton Valley for a follow-up meeting and meetings with some of the principals involved. That resulted in a occupational health and safety order to put in place an asbestos code of practice for the Town of Drayton Valley with a very aggressive timeframe for doing that. Fortunately, our safety coordinator, in looking at this, had recognized that deficiency and had begun work on that independent of being required to by the provincial regulator. And so with that order, I am happy to say that we have complied and filed on time, and a copy of that, the code of practice, which is our code of practice for the town, is included as an information item in Council's package today. A second occupational health and safety investigator has also attended to the community and has, that work to date has resulted in two demands for information that have been given to the town, each of which had, I would say, an even more aggressive timeframe around. The first was for a request of information of all staff who had worked at the Omniplex between 2010 and August of 2016, including contact information and information about their duties and what relative exposure they would have had to the shed or their duties if they required that. We were given a week to turn that around. to turn that around, and our staff complied. That, I was quite impressed with that turnaround time, and it did result in a couple of other aspects, including our annual safety audit that we needed to garner an extension from in order to comply with the provincial demand. A second demand shortly followed for records that may be relevant to this issue, again with a very lengthy time horizon. Again, we were given a week with some indication that there was a willingness to give us a bit more time, understanding that. That demand is, it will be complied with as well. We needed more than a week, but we did provide some initial information based on both a hard record and electronic record search. So, we are undertaking all, I think, responsible and reasonable undertakings to comply with what the provincial requirements and demands are. It does suggest that the activity of the provincial body may be to undertake their own separate investigation and report, and as such, then our internal reporting will then be put into sync with the provincial activity. I have communicated this to staff at the Omniplex in that they are very interested, and I had committed to them that I would share the internal report and any recommendations or findings that came from that with them. I have advised them of occupational health and safety's involvement and the necessity for us to comply with their activities and also then to provide our report, once completed, to the provincial inspector as per their request. So, we expect that this will take us into January, this work and this activity, with the hope that we actually get the necessary reporting in place and completed as quickly as is possible, and then ensure that all of our actions and activities going forward are responsible and reflective of staff safety and public safety needs and concerns going forward. The last item was just to make comment and mention of the staff Christmas party, which was last Saturday, and appreciation to council that most were able to attend, and it was very nice to have you there. And from all accounts, my own personal account as well, a great time was had by all. So, as this is the last report of this year, just on behalf of administration to council, myself, my family to yours, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, all the best in 2017, and we look forward to a less exciting year ahead, hopefully in 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Dibbin. In relation to the asbestos issue, what I would like, I'd like to commend members of administration who've been involved in this for meeting the timelines such as they are. The timelines, although I don't have direct experience with these things, they seem onerous. And so, at the end of, when this process is concluded, I would like to, I think, circle back to administration and possibly make some representations to the province on what they're asking and when they're asking it, and whether or not it's reasonable or unreasonable. As I say, it seems onerous. That's just an intuitive observation, but maybe at the conclusion, we'll be able to, I wouldn't go so far as to say it's bordering on delusional to expect that we respond in such a quick timeframe, at least not yet. But we should revisit it. All right. Thanks very much. Council reports. Councilor Wheeler. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have a question?
Yes, just really quick. In terms of the contract for the waste bins, are residents getting new bins? And what does that, do they need to do something with their old ones?
Yes, there will be new bins that will be brought into the community. The existing bins are the property of our current service provider. They are under contract until the end of the year, following which then it will be their responsibility to collect their property and remove it or attend to it elsewhere. So, we are, just as Mr. Fraser had said, we are just finalizing and getting the formal drafts in place. And from that, then we will be putting together the appropriate advisories to the community through all mediums to advise of what's forthcoming and what they do and do not have to do.
Now, Councilor Wheeler.
Thank you. December so far, the end of November, has been great. I got a chance to go to Aurora and see the science action plans. The students had different projects on how to reduce waste or save water or deal with plastics and actions that they specifically could take as well as everyone else. So, it was great to see their involvement in the broader thinking of the community. We had a community foundation meeting, and then Shakin in DV and Brandy did a wonderful job, so it's fun to say congratulations. Our National Day of Remembrance for Violence Against Women had a gathering. That was, it was very nice. Nice to see support from the community. We have two council birthdays this week, so happy birthday, happy birthday. And then, the last thing was a headwaters meeting, which has been going wonderful. The Modest Sub Watershed Riparian Project is what we've been working on, and we are the advisory committee. There is a technical committee that does the technical work. I'm not out there. Nobody panic. They're working on Phase One and Phase Two, which they received funding for. So, they're doing a map. They're looking at doing a flying over, and then also using GIS data that the municipalities have to create a hotspot to show where they target high-risk areas on there that need, need help. So, and then also which areas have the most effect for the dollars being spent. They're also working with other municipalities to strategize for when their borders line up, so that the projects can continue the whole way through, as well as looking at the effort municipalities are putting in to make sure that it's all going towards the same efforts. Once they interpret the data, they'll be working on the projects they can do coming forward with different municipalities, and then they move on to Phase 3.5 and 4, which is down in the future, but looking at alignment of bylaws on riparian areas in our communities, the minimums and maximums that counties have on setbacks on the creeks to make sure that, again, they're all the same for development. And then also looking at the Between Alice and the Green Infrastructure Funds to work with government on different levels to make sure that they're protecting source water here, but also federally, and using those dollars most efficiently in our municipalities. So, they've been very productive, and yeah, I'm sure there'll be more updates as we go along. Other than that, Merry Christmas and Happy New Years.
Thank you. Councilor Bossert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On November 24th, I was able to sit in for the mayor at the Pembina Area Synergy Group. This is a group of a number of key businesses and industry leaders in our area. And just listening to each group give a small report on the activities within their business, for the most part, all of them reported a shift to the positive in what they're seeing in their business or in their industry, although it may not be the same type of work we have seen in the past. There is a bit of an uptake and some optimism about what we may see in the industries in our area for 2017. So, that was a very interesting meeting to attend to and good to hear, that some people are being rehired back to their old positions and new positions are being opened up. As Teresa alluded, FCSS got word that Dr. Under, Dr. Unger was granted his five-year research project funding. This is a massive project and has wonderful implications for our community here, one of a handful of communities around the world that was chosen, probably due to no short amount in Lola Strand's relationship, longstanding relationship with Dr. Unger and his great work with Resiliency. We are now in search of a PhD in humanities. If anybody knows of somebody that has a PhD in our community and is interested in doing some research work, Lola's the lady to get a hold of. But this project will probably be on course for mid-March, early April, once we get the right people in seats to move forward with the project. With the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Strategy Team, we've had great increase in interest in our MAP program. With the extreme cold that we've been experiencing, there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook about the program. People concerned that we can't be open seven nights a week. And the conversations that I was able to have with people on Facebook over last weekend was, please sign up and volunteer to be part of this program. It's a very easy orientation, could involve only one or two nights a week for overnight shifts, to ensure that we are open seven nights a week and provide safe, warm shelter for those that are in need through this very cold weather. And if the shelter is not open, if the MAP program is not open, we also do provide alternative housing every night for those that are in need. And all they need to do is contact Emily. We have posters distributed throughout the community with our emergency phone numbers, and if you ever find yourself in need of overnight housing, that is available here in the community. But I do want to extend my gratitude to those that are already volunteering. We have approximately 22 people that are very diligent and offer their time and their services to keep the MAP program open two to three, sometimes four nights a week. Congratulations to everyone that was involved in Shakin in Drayton. I wasn't able to attend. I really wish I had been there. I understand that a very handsome sum was raised for humans helping humans that will help them move forward with their next project, which I imagine will be a build in 2017. Ms. Frederickson found herself on the front page of Drayton Valley newspaper this week. Congratulations to all that were involved. And finally, I just wanted to say Merry Christmas to all of our staff, our administration, our residents here in the community. 2016 has been a very demanding and challenging year for all of us. My hat's off to all of the staff that worked through the, worked diligently through our budget process and was, were able to present our interim budget this morning. It reflects a true picture of our community. We work very hard to balance realities with what we hope will come in the future, but I look forward to having a positive picture for 2017, but I thank all the staff that worked on the budget for us. And I hope that things warm up, everyone stays safe, and has a great Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Frederickson.
I had met with Brazos Seniors Foundation last Wednesday, Friday, sorry, and we did go over the 2017 budget. Brazos Seniors Foundation, if you recall, last year had reduced the requisition amount that they initially had put forward, so they too, similar to the town, are feeling that crunch. They also are trying to budget for things that there are still unknowns for, similar to the municipality in terms of the carbon tax and other increases that can be attributed to that, such as transportation increases for food and those kind of auxiliary things as well. I attended the Tourism Roundtable, and yeah, kudos to Mr. Burton. He did an excellent job. I had heard that from some of the other people that also attended as well. Sixtieth Anniversary Committee, we had met, and we had, I think we at least got a good footing on where we're headed here for the next year. And as we go, we'll be probably looking at and tweaking some things. And also, the Eagle Point Blue Rapids, we had done their AGM, I believe that was, that may have been the end of October. The AGM was very successful. They've done very well in procuring grants for 2016, and things, they are putting their eye to 2017, because some of the sponsorships are definitely becoming more difficult to be able to attain. However, one grant that they were able to obtain was grant dollars from both provincial and federal governments with regards to wetlands restoration on the east side of the North Saskatchewan River in the Blue Rapids Park area. And as a result of those grant funds, that area has been quite cut up through illegal use of ATV-ing in that area. So, they're able to, one, restore the wetlands, and also as a part of that, they're able to actually establish a family-friendly ATV route that would be able to stand up a bit better to ATVs in the area and save the wetlands. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilor Nado.
Thank you, Mayor. I've attended several CET meetings, newly chair. We have been talking about budget, as it's included, and as well as the CE schedule, which is the first time it's been included since its inception, upcoming focus and events, and also about the ongoing support for our new bio industry. There's a bio industry hemp, sorry, hemp industry event happening this week at CTC through the MLA's office. So, just ongoing showing our support to our local industry. I also was able to attend the Science Action Plan presentation at Aurora Elementary. It's always nice to be included in school projects. I did note, they were, one of their topics was, they were given different topics, and a couple of them referred to, can you believe dumps are still around? And I thought, well, yes, but I thought that might be an opportunity as a municipal leader to maybe invite them over to our Aston Waste Management Facility. I was wondering if maybe Ron could maybe contact somebody at Aurora Elementary. It fit well into the curriculum, and I don't know that they know that there are excellent examples in environmental sustainability within that kind of, yeah, environment. So, I thought maybe it would be a good opportunity, a great field trip. So, maybe administration could look at a little olive branch there and say, there are great examples of things like that in the community. But, and I'm sure Mrs. Landry would probably just love an opportunity to kind of showcase what they're learning as well. So, I can give you the context of that or her contact number, if you like. I also attended EPAC meeting, our last one before the new year. EPAC is also celebrating its 60th anniversary in 2017, and we did discuss applying for the 60th Anniversary Grant and looking at bringing in two movies that came out during 1957, and having at the original theater was, is kind of something that they're looking at in terms of fundraising opportunity. And there's some great old movies that came out in 1957, so I'm looking forward to those events. And also, the, in continuing to that, the 60th Anniversary Committee and the ongoing planning of this coming big year and how we're able to support that. And the Tourism Roundtable, I just want to echo that that was a great event. Eric did a good job, and it was what Councilor Long had said about nice to see different people in the room and how we can bring that forward. And everybody left with a commitment to do something in their own regard. So, I think that's excellent. I'll be sharing my comments with our Economic Development Committee meeting tomorrow, and how we heard some things about what, what kind of the people around the table really wanted to see, and there's some surveys through Tourism Alberta that we could, and some funding for some surveys. So, maybe we could look at doing that under the municipal lead. So, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fraser, just on Councilor Nado's point about extending an invitation to the schools, elementary schools in particular, to arrange class visits to the landfill, we sent a letter to the schools regarding the water treatment facilities, and there was excellent uptake. So, this would be another opportunity, we could, a similar letter should be crafted in that regard. Phil, Council Frederickson, did you have a question?
Just if we're crafting that letter, it's Waste Management Facility instead of landfill, because landfill gives connotations to the dump.
I think he knows what it is. Yeah. I'm a little deficient. Gotcha. I appreciate that. Councilor Long?
I'm going to keep my thoughts on that to myself. The only thing of any real interest I had recently was the Tourism Roundtable, which I think we've all talked about. So, I'm just going to thank everybody in administration for putting up with us for the last 12 months and wish you all Merry Christmas.
Excellent. Councilor Schuler.
Thank you, worship. Well, I don't actually have any committee updates or meetings that I want to report on. on, but I would like to reflect back on my time on council for the last nine years. I very much enjoyed representing the residents of Drayton Valley, and I do thank them for having the confidence in me over these last three terms. It is kind of fitting that this last term should be, or this last, yeah, this last term should be as challenging as our first term was, you know, arriving at swearing-in ceremony to find out that we lost 12% of our revenue in one night, was not how I actually envisioned starting out on council. From that day on, budget time has always been a challenge. But we have accomplished some very amazing things, even with the budget challenges we've had, and you look at, from the CETC, Discovery Park, our water treatment plant, our award-winning sustainability plan, to name a few. Council has been very creative to bring these community-altering developments to life. I want to thank administration and staff for all their hard work to provide the citizens of Drayton Valley a level of service that most communities would be envious of. Our snow removal, our parks, the Omniplex, Mackenzie Center, CETC, our water and wastewater treatment plants, the Park Valley Pool, ECDC, and our recycling program, and yes, even our Waste Management Facility, makes our community unique and always at the forefront, breaking new ground and miles ahead of other communities, not only communities of our size, but communities much larger than us. To those in planning, engineering, information services, finance, emergency services, bylaw, community services, our executive and administrative assistants, legislative services, utility and reception, communications, economic development, facilities, library, Omniplex, ECDC, CETC, yeah, goes on, Park Valley Pool, Public Works, Recreation and Programming, Sustainability, and finally, our CAO, please accept my heartfelt thank you. You have made me very proud to say that I'm from Drayton Valley, and my community is the best in Canada. My only disappointment over this time has been that we've not been able to develop a better relationship with Brazzo County. It is unfortunate that county council cannot see the wonderful opportunities, not only within the town, but also the unique opportunities with the Eagle Point's Blue Rapids Park, Brazzo Dam, and the North Saskatchewan River, just to name a few that frankly have been ignored. The opportunities over other municipalities, CETC, that Brazzo County has no interest in is truly disappointing. Just imagine what we could have been able to provide to our citizens, and how we have been able to help the businesses and residents in the region during this economic downturn if we would have had even some cooperation from county council. It is truly disappointing that they have shown no interest in advancing the region. Town Council. It has truly been a pleasure working with you over the last three terms. Brandy, as the newest member of council, you've been a breath of fresh air. Your wonderful ability not to accept anything as presented, but question things until you have the information you need to make your decision has been enlightening. Though we have had some spirited debates, you have made me question my initial choice and make sure I am confident and have valid reasons to support my decisions. You truly have the best interests of the community at heart, so thank you, you have helped me develop as a person and as a counselor. Pharaoh, your youthfulness and enthusiasm has been a welcome addition to council. Your ability to see positive in everything is very encouraging. Your youthful perspective is not only needed, but a welcome addition to council. I do enjoy how you make sure things do not slip through the cracks and continue to bring back items and question where projects and items stand. You make sure both council and administration follow through on their commitments, so keep up the good work. Graham, your unique sense of humor has been a delight. Even though you have been on council for only a short time, the history and background you bring has been a real bonus. Your background has provided council with a unique perspective that I am glad that I've had the opportunity to experience. I would not have missed it for anything. It has been a pleasure to have served with you. Deb, I can truly say that I'm proud to have served on council with you. You came on council, a bit naive, but have developed into a very effective counselor. You pride yourself in being the voice of a segment of society that normally does not get a lot of representation. Be proud of this, and yourself. This is truly a noble pursuit. Thank you, I have learned from you, and I can genuinely say you've helped me develop as a person and as a counselor. Nicole, you and I have been on, been through the most as we started at the same time. Because of this, I have seen you develop the most. When we started, you were scared and very unsure of yourself, but now you are one of the best counselors I've ever seen. You've advanced so many programs locally, provincially, and nationally, and brought pride to your community and council. Your dedication to the community is second to none, and this community will never be able to fill the hole that will be left when you decide to leave council. You have often talked about council being like family, and over the last nine years, you have become family. You've helped me grow and develop as a person and as a counselor. You I will miss the most. Glenn, I want to thank you for taking this community through some very difficult times. You've led us through something that no council has ever done in over 40 years, and that is replacing our CAO. You helped us find a terrific candidate that will take us into the future. You've led us through the biggest recession this community has seen, at least since the National Energy Program, if not in our entire history. I don't think it is over yet, but I do see light at the end of the tunnel. You speak of resiliency, and you have helped make this a resilient community. Coming into this term, I was not one of your supporters, but I will be the first to say you have done a terrific job, and I am proud to have served with you, and now I'm proud to say I am one of your supporters, so keep up the good work. In closing, I would like to say once again, thank you to the citizens of Drayton Valley for allowing me to be their voice and serve them over the last nine years. It's been part of my life that I would not trade for anything, and something I know one day, soon, I will miss very much. I want to wish council, our CAO staff, and the citizens of Drayton Valley a very Merry Christmas and a happy and prosperous New Year.
Mercifully, I did not have a lengthy council report to give, because I really can't follow Thank you. Thank you for those kind words, thank you for your service. It's not done yet. Thank you for being, as we all are in our own unique way, an essential part of the work And Merry Christmas to all of you, to administration. Can I get a resolution to accept items 9.1 through 9.11? For information, please, Councilor Wheeler, thank you, all in favor. That is carried. Could I get a motion adjourned? Councilor Schuler, all in favor.